Here we go. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing for Tuesday, June 28, 2022. If could all rise, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Our order business tonight, we'll, we have two public hearings on our, actually, if you want to call it four. We'll first hear from our applicants, then we'll hear from town staff, then we'll hear from members of the public, first those in favor, and then those against or having questions or concerns, and then we will hear from commissioners. If anyone would like to speak tonight, we should have a sign-up sheet, or not a sign-up sheet, a sign-in sheet on the podium, and if you could, give us your name and address and introduce yourself to the commission. If someone has a cellphone, if they could, please put it on vibrate or mute, we would appreciate it. And when members of the public are speaking tonight, these microphones work best at a distance of three to six inches from your mouth, so if you're a little taller, if you could raise it up, if you're a little lower, tilt it down, and please speak loudly and clearly into it. It makes it a lot easier with the acoustics in here. Okay, we have a couple commissioners that are out tonight, so we will substitute Commissioner Bernstein for Commissioner Vatiri and Commissioner Carey for Commissioner LeBlanc. And at this time, we'll call our first application, which is Application 22-07P.
Don't we need a read?
Oh, thank you very much. We will have the reading of the notice, Secretary Wagner. Thank you, Steve.
I wouldn't want to go by without my time of moment of fame. "To be published in the journal Inquirer Friday, June 17, 2022, and Thursday, June 23, 2022, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, June 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, Application 22-07P, Evergreen Walk LLC, multi-family text amendment. Request to amend specific requirements for multifamily residential use in the Buckland Gateway Development Zone, including Sections 4.2.15A.2. E, to increase the number of units permitted to 365 units, and modify Section 4.2.15A.2. C, to modify the criteria for achieving the required two-to-one ratio, residential to commercial ratio for mixed-use developments within this zone, continued from May 10, 2022. Number two, Application 22-08P, Evergreen Walk LLC, request to modify the Evergreen Walk general plan of development in accordance with Section 4.2.15D.2, and approval of a special exception pursuant to Section 4.2.15D.1, for a 165-unit residential development for a portion of 151 Buckland Road within Evergreen Walk, known as Unit 7C, and being approximately 2,000 feet west of Buckland Road and 1,000 feet north of Smith Street. Buckland Road Gateway Development Zone, continued from May 10, 2022. Number three, Application 22-17P, Skanel Properties, Number 644 LLC, request for a minor re-subdivision for the redesign of the cul-de-sac at the northern end of Kennedy Road, I Zone, continued from June 14, 2022. And number four, Application 22-18P, Skanel Properties LLC, Number 1, Number 644 LLC, request for a site plan approval for a 241,800-square-foot warehouse and distribution center on 19.2 acres on properties located at 67,68 Kennedy Road and 352 Sullivan Avenue, I Zone, continued from June 14, 2022. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or planning department and online at https://www.southwindsor CT.gov/PlanningDepartmentPages/Planning and Zoning Commission Applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard, and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Part Passaconas Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission."
Thank you very much. And now we'll call our first applicant, Application 22-07P, Evergreen Walk LLC, multi-family text amendment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
If you could, please, microphone in front of you.
I will start again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut, and I know you're used to seeing a tall, dark, and handsome gentleman here with regard to this application named Chris Smith, but he could not make it this evening. He asked if I would come instead, so please, you know, should I not have a quick response for you? I may need to consult with the client, because unlike Chris, I have not been involved with this application from its very start. As indicated by the public notice, we have really three applications pending before this commission. The first one, for which this public hearing is scheduled, is the text change. There are two others that are related to what is intended to be the end development once we get through this process. And the second hearing is the amendment to a general plan of development for Evergreen Walk and a special exception to permit a 165-unit multifamily residential community at Unit 7C. So the first portion of our process and our first public hearing deals only with the zone text amendment, and we will be sticking to that particular subject. What would then happen should all three applications be approved, hopefully, if we were able to have our way this evening, we would then proceed to the site plan permitting phase of this particular development, and of course, there'd be more details that you might want to get into at that particular point in time. For this first hearing, Alan Lamson, FLB Architecture and Planning, our planning consultant, will go through the proposed text amendment, which has been updated from the version you previously considered at the hearing on May 10. You should have a copy of what we are proposing in terms of the amendment that you would be voting on. He will go through the proposed text amendment and explain how it has evolved, basically based on your comments and the feedback that we've had from town staff. Recall that at the last hearing session, we presented the amendment, which at that time, we believed was responsive to the issues that had been put before us, before you denied our text change application previously. Since then, we've received comments both from you and from staff, and we believe that this current draft that you have before you now is ready for you to look favorably upon it and approve it. And hopefully, once we're finished, you would be able to indicate that we seem to have addressed the things that you are concerned with, with regard to that. So, once Alan has gone through the changes, I would just like to make a few comments in closing, and with that, I'd like to ask Alan Lamson to come up and go through the changes in the text amendment before you. Alan?
Thank you very much. For the record, Alan Lamson, FLB Architecture and Planning, with offices in Manchester, Connecticut, representing the applicant this evening. After the hearing in May, we took the comments from the commission to heart. We made several revisions to the regulations, and I believe that the biggest one that was focused is Commissioner Wagner suggested that rather than the amendment speaking to this applying to the area west of Buckland Road, that we pick another line further west, and I believe his suggestions were somewhere in the order of 1,200 to 1,400 feet west of Buckland, and that this would then apply only to that area. We looked at it, let me pass these out, because it'll be a lot easier for the commission members to see this than the board.
Thank you.
So what we did was, we plotted a line parallel to the west edge of Buckland Road, westerly of it, 1,200 feet from Buckland Road, and 1,400 feet from Buckland Road, to see what that would determine. And as you can see, the two parallel lines here, 1,200 and 1,400 feet, we looked at that and realized that it started cutting through a lot of the other units. A unit would fall either in or out of the line. Also, at 1,400 feet, we're coming very close and maybe intruding into the existing residential development at Tempo, and what we didn't want to do is have this amendment apply, we didn't want this to impact Tempo. And so we felt that we should make sure that Tempo was out of, was within the area, okay, that it didn't fall half in, part in, a little bit in, or whatever. So what we did, in keeping with the spirit of this, what we are suggesting in here, that we move the line that we talked about where this amendment would only apply west of Buckland Road, we move it so that it applies west of Tamarack Avenue. So we took, you can see the dash line, that is the west edge of Tamarack Avenue. And that way, we're not cutting through units, we're not bifurcating them and causing issues within a unit, plus, it doesn't really change all of the parcels that it would impact. If we did the 1,200 to 1,400 feet, virtually nothing on the north end of Evergreen Walk falls in this. Everything that is, except for the Costco parking lot, everything that's to the west of Tamarack is either upland review area, or wetland area, or other non-developable areas. Down below, it takes the rest of the units that are in, that are, they're completely within the area, so we're not carving them up. We also thought it was a lot easier to determine where it is, because everybody knows where the west edge of Tamarack Avenue is. And we don't have to be, if anybody else ever applies under this thing, there's not an issue of where are we measuring from, how far, the whole thing. So we just thought the west edge of Tamarack was within the spirit of what Commissioner Wagner was asking for, and I wanted to be able to show you this graphically, so it's easier to understand. So within the text amendment, that, the final one that you received about a week ago or a few days ago, we aren't changing the number of units that are involved, it's still 365, we haven't changed that. We are not changing the rest of the wording that you have seen within paragraph C, sub numeral I, that hasn't changed except for Buckland Road to Tamarack Avenue. The developer that we're working with has asked to put in sub-paragraph II, I, which talks about the affordable housing component. We haven't changed the regulation up above, it's still 10%, but what we're saying is, if somebody were to come with a proposal for greater than 12%, then they would be able to seek from you the approval to increase the number of two-bedroom units, though instead of a 50-50 split, it could be 65-35, 65% two-bedrooms, 35% one-bedrooms. It could be, could have a deed restriction that would be reduced to no less than 20 years, where the paragraph up above says 40. And finally, that the prohibition against the use of vinyl clapboard that's in your Section 4.2.15 could be allowed as an acceptable exterior building material. I just point out that your regulation is very clear that it's vinyl clapboard siding, it doesn't prohibit vinyl vertical board and batten siding, it doesn't prohibit vinyl shiplap siding, there's a whole bunch of vinyl sidings that you could put on that are not clapboard. So we're just saying, if we're that far back, and we ask, you know, putting vinyl, a good quality vinyl clapboard on is not going to diminish the quality. So those are the changes. Virtually, the only thing is changing from the west side of Buckland Road to the west side of Tamarack, and that final paragraph, just so we're clear. Nothing else in there has changed from the last document you saw.
Thank you, Alan. The only thing I would like to add to that presentation for the hearing, in addition to answering any questions that you might have, is to just remind you, I know we went through this previously, but we do believe, for the reasons that were discussed before, that this is a text amendment that makes sense and is something that complies with the various measurements by which you have to consider a text amendment. And in particular, they are that this is consistent with the goals and objectives of your comprehensive plan. It is also, we feel, compatible with the requirements of General Statute, Section 8-2, which speaks to your zoning code and a zoning map, this use would not be incompatible with what you've established for the area, which would be affected by this regulation change. We do believe it is, it is definitely consistent with your newly adopted South Windsor Affordable Housing Plan, and for all those reasons, we hope that you'll be able to favorably review the requested amendment. Certainly before we close a hearing, if you have any questions for us whatsoever on this, that you would like to have explored in further detail before you make a decision on where you stand on this amendment, that you afford us the opportunity to go into those concerns that you might have in detail, so that we're not in a situation where, once the hearing is closed, you might go, well, perhaps if I had asked the applicant a little bit more about this, this, or this, you might be more comfortable in your vote. So with that, that concludes our presentation. I also should note for you that Howard Rappaport, Continental Properties, is also here, if you have any questions of him with regard to the text amendment. And again, we look forward to a favorable review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Lipe.
Thank you. I just have two comments on the text amendment. I think the clarification of Tamarack does a good job of not making anything non-conforming that's westerly of that, so I think Tamarack satisfies what the goal was of that comment. And then the second paragraph that's added, I look favorably on this paragraph. I think one of the things about the affordable units that we've created in South Windsor so far is they've been highly in the elderly category, and we've created very few family units. So by, if a developer is willing to up the amount of affordable units, and the number of two-bedrooms gets up along with that, I think that that's working towards some of the goals that we've kind of identified as a need in our community. I would recommend that we do stay with the 40-year restriction on the affordability, that's kind of consistent through what we've been looking for. So that is one change I would recommend in that paragraph. And again, the use of other materials, I think, with the products that are out there today, I think that, you know, we're still going to see a good product, designer you can look at anything that's proposed through the process. So again, I don't have a particular concern with how this worded, other than looking for 40 years affordability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments on this application.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have letters to be read into the record. And the applicant, what we did with the past letters that were read in previous, the previous meetings, was, there were some letters that were in favor, and I believe we read those all during the first hearing and just accepted them for the record at the second meeting. I'm wondering if that's still the route you would like to take.
Mr. Chairman, Robin Pearson, that is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn to our secretary, recording secretary, to read the records, letters into the record.
I am the secretary, not the recording secretary.
It's secretary, apologize, no recording.
I don't record anything, which is thankfully not my job. So this is, and I'll read as many of these I can until I get hoarse, and then I'll pass them on to other commissioners. So dear, well, this is from Ernie Hanna-Bali, Northwest Atlantic at Costco representative. "I am writing on behalf of Costco, one of Evergreen Walk's most recent additions, to express our support for the residences at Evergreen Walk. Like all retailers, Costco relies on a healthy and diverse consumer market of neighboring homes and residences. The addition of 165 new units at Evergreen will surely add customers, not only for Costco, but for all of our neighboring businesses in Evergreen Walk and throughout the area. For these reasons, we support the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk and encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve their application." This letter is from Sweden Bibel, who's Schwab Independent Branch Leader and Financial Consultant, who has an office at 83 Evergreen Way. "As a financial consultant, Schwab franchisee, and independent branch operator at 83 Evergreen Way, I wish to voice my support for the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. The proposed residence at Evergreen Walk will add needed revenue for South Windsor. South Windsor has borrowed $75 million to support school construction and municipal improvements, with an estimated annual debt service of $1.5 million. South Windsor needs economic development and additional tax revenue to offset potential tax increases and maintain South Windsor services. For these reasons, I encourage you to approve this proposal. Sweden Bibel, CFP MBA." This letter is from Alice Chang. And actually, let me just say who's signing it. It's signed by Alice and Leo. Alice Chang and- It's signed by Alice and Leo, Alice Chang and Leo Zornberg. As South Windsor residents, we are writing to voice our support for the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Proposed residences at Evergreen Walk will strengthen and continue the revitalization of Evergreen Walk. South Windsor relies on the revenue generated by Evergreen Walk to support town schools, public safety, recreation, and general government operations. A strong Evergreen Walk is essential for South Windsor's financial stability. The addition of 165 new residences will provide needed new customers for the shops, restaurants, and services at Evergreen Walk, help retain existing tenants, and attract new businesses. Proposed residence at Evergreen Walk will add needed revenue for South Windsor. South Windsor will be, will soon be borrowing $75 million to support school construction and municipal improvements, with an estimated annual debt service of $1.5 million. South Windsor needs economic development and additional tax revenue to offset potential tax increases and maintain South Windsor services. She's actually, these are several headings. So, this heading says, "Proposed residences at Evergreen Walk will help South Windsor achieve its affordable housing." Only 6.8% of South Windsor's housing stock is affordable housing, well below the state's objective of 10%. 10% of residents at Evergreen Walk will be affordable, helping meet the objectives of the South Windsor 2022 to 2027 Affordable Housing Plan. Next heading is, "Multi-family housing is the highest and best use for the site. Retail is not a desired use at this site due to lack of visibility and inferior location. Commercial use is currently approved for the site, but would add more traffic than the residential use proposed. Office and manufacturing are not in demand and produce more traffic at peak hours than multifamily housing. Single-family homes produce the greatest number of students per unit, while multifamily homes produce the least. The estates at South Windsor, single-family subdivision on Graham Road, added 1.14 students per residence, while Tempo multifamily apartments at Evergreen Walk added only 0.21, or approximately only one student for every five residences. For the reasons cited above, we support the proposed residence at Evergreen Walk, and we want to thank the Commission for your consideration." This letter is from Mingji Liu, also known as Sam. I am Mingji Liu, a resident at Tempo Evergreen Walk, and I'm writing to voice my support for this residence at Evergreen Walk. We came here a year ago, will move to a larger apartment in the same residence next month. We really enjoy living here. The office is normally available seven days a week, which I rarely saw through my seven-year renting experience. The manager and every staff member are very friendly and helpful to assist us solve all kinds of problems we may have. On a weekly basis, they also try to enrich residents' lives by holding different types of activities. Everybody can see their endeavor to help maintain a wonderful community. As we have observed, many large grocery stores like Costco and Whole Foods are opening here, and more people are attracted to live here. The market demand for apartments in this area is significantly increasing. Constructing more residency buildings at Tempo would ameliorate the shortage of high-quality apartments, prevent overpricing, and stimulate surrounding commercial activities. As I have illustrated with my personal living experience and observation, Tempo is a very dedicated, responsible, and friendly community, and I wish that more people could have the opportunities to live here. Mingji Liu." This is the last one I'm going to read. This is from Allison Leons. Dear Mr. Passakonis, I'm writing to you today in support of the residential expansion of Evergreen Walk. I presently rent an apartment at Tempo and enjoy the amenities, location, and access to the many conveniences that South Windsor has to offer. With so many new retail establishments opening, it's the perfect location that enables me to shop locally, where I previously had to go to Glastonbury, West Hartford, or the West Farms area. Having lived in East Street, Connecticut, the most of my life, and recently needing a rental, I found there's a lack of newer communities that compare to those available in other areas of Connecticut. Finding Tempo fulfilled my needs, and I'm able to live with the standards of my previous home, and stay close to friends and family where I would otherwise left. I recognize the area is currently commercially zoned. However, it is great that the residents are set back from the hustle and traffic of Buckland Road, and are somewhat hidden. This creates a quiet community where children can play, people can walk, and exercise safely. Commercial building in this area will only cause additional congestion and degradation of the quality of life that has been created here. I appreciate your consideration to allow residential expansion in Evergreen Walk. Kind regards, Allison Leons."
We'll turn to Commissioner Dexter.
Dear Mr. Passakonis, I'm current resident of Tempo Evergreen Walk. I wanted to contact you to support the construction of additional residences at my complex on Andrews Way. Being a resident at Tempo, it's clear to me that any revitalization of the shops at Evergreen Walk will require additional foot traffic to make the shops successful. As a Tempo resident, I frequent the shops, and it has been sad to see so many closed due to lack of customer support. A successful construction of new apartments at Tempo would bring the client base that would revitalize the shops, and therefore bring in tax revenue for the town. I've lived at Tempo for almost two years now, and I can confirm that they provide quality housing that South Windsor residents and people who will relocate from other areas will enjoy. Sincerely, Matthew Popke. Dear Chairman Passakonis, I'm a business owner in South Windsor, and would like to add my voice to the many others who support the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. The new proposed community and its 165 new units will mean new customers for Evergreen Walk and neighboring businesses, and should also help fill some of the area's vacant retail space. South Windsor is borrowing $75 million to support school construction and municipal improvements, with an estimated annual debt service of $1.5 million. The revenue generated by this proposal will help pay the cost of these needed improvements, and help maintain town services. Please approve the residences at Evergreen Walk and help secure South Windsor's future. Sincerely, Mark Woodcock, President, Woodcock Refrigeration Company. Dear, good morning, Chairman Passakonis, I hope this correspondence finds you well. I am a resident of South Windsor, and I'm writing to you to show my support for the proposed residence at Evergreen Walk. Currently, I reside at Tempo at Evergreen Walk, and I'd like to tell you what I like about the community and location. I have found it to be one of the most diverse communities I have ever experienced, which is my favorite aspect of the community. But there are many other things I like about this community. It is very convenient to all the amenities, such as culture, nature, shopping, town services, and schools. The addition of the new development would allow for more people to enjoy our community and the town of South Windsor. So, what would it mean to the town? Increased tax revenue to help offset the costs of school's construction and municipal improvements. Please consider the proposed development is a win for all involved. Thank you. Jill Kofield, 100 Andrews Way. Dear Chairman Passakonis, as owner of M&amp;R Liquors at 206 Buckland Road in South Windsor, Connecticut, I am writing to express my support for the proposed addition of 165 new residential units to Evergreen Walk. As our town's second-largest taxpayer, Evergreen Walk's health and stability is of the utmost importance. I believe that it is imperative that we all do what we can to help support the retail component of Evergreen Walk. The addition of 165 new residential units within walking distance to shops like mine will provide needed new customers, and help protect one of the town's most important assets. Furthermore, the new community will add approximately $850,000 in annual tax revenue and fees, plus $460,000 in one-time upfront permit fees, needed funds that will help maintain South Windsor services. For these reasons, I urge you to approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Gary Roundsville, M&amp;R Liquors at 206 Buckland Road. Last one, and I'll hand it over. Dear Mr. Passakonis, we live in the Tempo community at 200 Andrews Way in the Evergreen Walk neighborhood, and are writing to express our support for the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. We thoroughly enjoy our home and all that our community has to offer, especially convenient access to the shops, restaurants, and services at Evergreen Walk. We have noticed that there are some vacancies in the retail area, and believe the addition of the new multi-housing being proposed adjacent to Tempo would help provide needed new customers for Evergreen Walk, and attract new stores and restaurants. For this reason, we urge Planning and Zoning to approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Emily Vardaro and Matthew Edwards.
Okay, we'll turn to Commissioner Cavignaro for a few more letters.
Thank you. Dear Mr. Passakonis, we live at 600 Andrews Way, number 102, in the Tempo community within Evergreen Walk, and support the addition of the residences at Evergreen Walk. We were attracted to Tempo by its convenient access to stores, restaurants, and services that are all within a convenient walk. We see our friends and neighbors doing the same, and feel that new residents would also be welcomed by neighboring businesses. Compared to other uses that could locate at the site of the proposed new community, office, retail, or manufacturing, we believe that an expansion to multifamily would be most appropriate for our community. Thank you for your consideration, and please approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Deborah and Frederick Windish. Next one. Dear Mr. Passakonis, as residences of the Tempo residential community at Evergreen Walk, we wanted to write and offer our support for the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. There are so many benefits to living in my community. Our neighbors are wonderful. Our community is clean, safe, and beautiful, and we can walk to many stores and restaurants nearby, even with our dog. We believe the addition of additional residential units will only add the vitality of our community, and provide additional new customers for South Windsor's businesses, which have been struggling to stay open. Compared to other uses that could go in the space, retail, commercial, office, or manufacturing, we believe new residential is the best use for that land. Please approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Ruth Flaherty and Matthew Plajak, 500 Andrews Way. Got the next one. Dear Mr. Passakonis, as residences of Tempo, the residential community next to the proposed site of the residences at Evergreen Walk, we are writing to offer our support for the proposed new community. One of the features that attracted us to move to Tempo was its proximity to shops at Evergreen Walk. We can easily walk to stores, services, and restaurants without having to drive or spend money on gas. We believe the addition of new residential will generate needed new customers for nearby stores, and help fill up some of the vacancies at Evergreen Walk. Please help our community, our community vibrant, by approving the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Alica Virgo and Javen Stewart, 300 Andrews Way, Apartment 203. Dear Mr. Passakonis, I write to you as both the Community Property Manager and a resident of Tempo at Evergreen Walk. I have held this position and been a resident of the community since April of 2017. Accordingly, I am writing to encourage the South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Our residents love the convenience of the nearby shops, restaurants, and look forward to the additions of Whole Foods and Shake Shack to the immediate area. Newness and leisure are undeniably well-favored conveniences when considering an area for residency. Of South Windsor's many attributes, what attracts most of Tempo specifically is that they do not need to use some of their cars as much with many of their daily shopping tasks, accomplishable by walking, especially since the extension of the walking trail further connecting the community. With expressed concern from the residents about the recent vacancies in the Evergreen Walk retail area, and understanding that COVID has taken a toll on all businesses, the addition of 165 new residential units will certainly provide added customers and attract those retailers who might be looking to locate at Evergreen Walk. A touch away from all that has to be essential, while simultaneously providing renters with this serenity of being set back from the main roads. Our location for residential development serves true to South Windsor's charm. For these reasons, I encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the proposed residences at Evergreen Walk. Sincerely, Jessica Cardona, Property Manager of Tempo Evergreen Walk. And those are all the emails we have.
Okay, I believe Secretary Wagner has some additional letters to read into the record.
Thank you. Dear Mr. Passakonis, as owner of Sakura Garden at Evergreen Walk, I am writing to urge your approval of the proposed new 165 residential units at Evergreen Walk. Restaurants like Sakura Garden at Evergreen Walk rely on customers who live within close proximity to their businesses. More customers, like those who will live in these new apartments, will surely benefit our restaurant and all of the businesses within the Evergreen Walk area. A great deal has changed in the nearly two decades since Evergreen Walk first opened. Consumers have changed how they shop, and retailers and tenants have changed to remain competitive. COVID has also taken its toll. I believe the additional investment of 165 new apartment houses will greatly enhance the area, and help secure the long-term financial viability of the Evergreen Walk. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to approve this application. Andy Liu, Sakura Garden, The Permanente Shops at Evergreen Walk. This is from Paul in Deion Bentley. To whom it may concern, we are very pleased to write this letter of recommendation for the expansion of Tempo at Evergreen Walk Apartments. My husband and I are current residents of the Tempo. The staff is also welcoming and readily available to meet you at whatever your every needs may be. We are living there due to a fire in our home. We were able to connect with different vendors through Tempo for furniture in this emergency. The property comes with amenities and a dog park for pet lovers. The community is family-friendly. Other residents in the town of South Windsor use Tempo to walk through due to the community being both friendly and safe for everyone. With all these reasons, I believe that Tempo will continue to thrive in the community, and an expansion for this property would be good for the town of Windsor. I think they meant South Windsor. Paul in Deion Bentley. This is, let's see, addressed to Jessica, but it's Erez Lopez, writing to Jessica Cardona, Community Manager, Tempo Evergreen Walk. Dear Jessica, I am writing to express my full support to the plans to expand the Tempo Evergreen Walk community. I have been a resident of the community for a year now, and my experiences here have so far exceeded my expectations. The community provides its residents with a clean, safe, and always welcoming environment. The facilities are well-maintained, and the staff is highly professional and dedicated to proving a wonderful experience to the residents. In addition, the many residential activities scheduled throughout the year allow the residents to come together as a community. All these factors enable the residents to truly feel at home at Tempo Evergreen Walk. Among many other positive factors, I must mention the outstanding geographical location of the community. The location's proximity to a major interstate highway, and a fully-developed commercial area with great number of shops, food markets, restaurants, healthcare offices, hospitals, pharmacies, and outdoor walking entertainment areas makes it a great location to consider expansion. Expanding the community will allow the new residents to enjoy the many benefits that are listed above, and contribute towards the town growth and development goals. As a resident of the community, I hope the decision to move forward with the expansion is fully approved. Dear Mr. Passakonis, as manager of 225 CPN LLC, the entity that owns 70 and 90 Bucklin Hill Road, South Windsor, Connecticut, I am writing to urge your approval of the proposed construction of 165 new residential units at Evergreen Walk. Retail tenants, like those we have at our property, rely on customers who live within close proximity to their businesses. More customers, like those who will live in these new apartments, will surely benefit all the businesses within the Evergreen Walk area. A great deal has changed in the nearly two decades since Evergreen Walk first opened. Customers have changed how they shop, and retailers and tenants have changed to remain competitive. COVID has also taken its toll. I believe the additional investment of 165 new apartment homes will greatly enhance the area, and help secure the long-term financial viability of the Evergreen Walk area. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to approve this application. Robert Samaya, Manager. So, this is a letter from our town manager. Dear Chairman Passakonis and Planning and Zoning Commission members, I am writing you to support the text amendment for the Evergreen Walk housing proposal. We have all heard the saying, "Best-laid plans." This common quote refers to how planners, we constantly put scenarios in place we believe will create in a deal situation, and then life happens. The original plans of Evergreen Walk had called for commercial to go in the proposed area. Unfortunately, the world of commercial Unfortunately, the world of commercial and in particular retail has changed, and with that, our original plans need to be rethought. An additional population base is desperately needed within the Evergreen Walk development in order to make it a success for current and future businesses. We are all aware of the renaissance that is occurring in Evergreen Walk. Through your efforts and those of many others, we are proud to watch the construction of Costco, Whole Foods, and Shake Shack. With the redevelopment and retention of Sakura Gardens and Old Navy, we are all awaiting to see the next exciting development occur. And in order to see that happen, many of these national brands will need a population base through additional local residential opportunities. Developments like the proposed 165 units in Evergreen Walk will not only support the current and proposed businesses, but will allow this one-of-a-kind development to grow and continue its place as a local and regional draw to our community. Not only will the residential development in Evergreen Walk provide business opportunities and continued economic growth, but also in the near term, it is estimated to generate $400,000 in new taxes. The town of South Windsor, at the direction of the voters, has undertaken one of the largest school reconstruction projects in the state. As a result, as of today, the town still has $75 million of authorized but unissued debt. This means that $75 million of debt payments that will need to be either absorbed by taxpayers or paid for through new developments like this. I understand you have challenging deliberations over the coming weeks. I would like to remind you that the South Windsor voters overwhelmingly approved numerous school projects based on financial models that assumed regular grand list growth. That growth can only come from projects like these. We are at a turning point with Evergreen Walk where this project can be a part of the foundation to a major success story for South Windsor and the region. I implore you to join the rest of us in being partners in that success. Support Evergreen Walk, support South Windsor, and support the taxpayers of our community by approving this project. Best regards, Michael Maniscalco. This is a letter from the mayor. Dear Planning and Zoning Commission Chair Passakonas and Commissioners, thank you for accepting this letter in support of the Evergreen Walk housing proposal. After review of the proposal, I have found that there is a significant affordable housing component within the application, and I'm very pleased to see that this particular development has given a great deal of consideration to both the residents within and outside of our community by offering an affordable place to live here in South Windsor. South Windsor is a welcoming community for everyone regardless of who they are, where they are from, or what their economic status is. As a municipality, we are facing a financial uphill battle in order to pay for school construction, increased enrollment, increased costs of doing business, and continued decrease in state funding. Additionally, according to the application, South Windsor can expect to receive an additional $400,000 in tax revenue from this development. As a result of projects like this, the town of South Windsor will be well on its way toward helping taxpayers pay for and maintain the level of services that we all have come to enjoy and deserve. Please join me in supporting the Evergreen Walk housing proposal as it will help with the overall financial health and horizon of the town while continuing to hold true that the town of South Windsor is an inclusive and welcoming community for everyone. Mayor Elizabeth E. Pendleton, Town of South Windsor. Let me just comment that all of these letters really apply to all three of the applications that are on the table tonight, so I'm hoping we will consider them having been included in all of those hearings.
Thank you. Any other letters? Is that... Okay. Then what I will do is open it up to members of the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns about this application? Please, we'll do in favor first. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Lady with the glasses? If you could just tilt down the microphone a little. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Roberta Gowing. I live at 601 Caballo Lane. It's in a budding property. On June 11, 2022, I did a summer bird count for Hartford Audubon along the trail located at Evergreen Walk, starting behind Costco and ending at the unopened hotel. This count is included in Cornell University Lab of Ornithology, which is done several times a year. Cornell and National Audubon have recently concluded that the bird population across the country is down by eight billion birds. My report included kingfisher, great blue heron, common yellowthroat, yellow warbler, chestnut-sided warbler, blackbirds, robins, blue jays, catbirds, mallards, nesting tree swallows, red-bellied woodpecker, house runs, a gardener snake, and a stoat, which is also known as an ermine. Not seen on my count that day, but what I see in my backyard from 601 Caballo Lane are other species, including red-breasted grosbeak, northern tanager, eastern woodthrush, eastern peewee, great horned owl, barred owl, cooper's hawk, red-tailed hawk, turkey vulture, bobcat, turkey, deer, pileated woodpecker, donny woodpecker, hairy woodpecker, ruby-throated hummingbird, and numerous small mammals. When wetlands, including man-made ones and natural woodlands, are destroyed, we have lost countless animals, including birds, mammals, reptiles, and insect species that depend on this natural area. I am alarmed the South Windsor seems to not be aware of the wildlife that surrounds us. Humans also need these areas because of the connection to nature, which bring inner peace and tranquility. I am asking the board to consider the impact that nature has on human quality of life. We seem to have endless shopping, housing, restaurants, and professional services, but we are not getting more natural areas for the quality of life in South Windsor. Please consider leaving this area for nature. The human population is growing in South Windsor for a desire to live in a small country setting, but it is slowly being taken away. I hope the board considers saving this piece of property for nature. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could, to your right, there's a sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else? The lady who was to her right? With the glasses?
Blue glasses, yes. My name is Cordelia Harrington. I live at 502 Caballo Lane, which is in Wheeler Estates. I will look out my living room and dining room windows when the leaves are down, and I will be looking directly at these new buildings. The one that upsets me the most is the four-story building, which will be directly in my view. I wonder if it could be moved to the... Where there's the buildings furthest away, they were in the upper right-hand corner when you had the projection on the wall behind you. It's just, it's very intrusive. When I moved in, it was a beautiful meadow out there, and as Roberta pointed out, lots of wildlife. It just seems like 165 is an awful lot of units to add. And they're mostly, I would say, transient people because the rentals that are offered are three months, six months, and one year. They're people who moved into our area for a job and are looking around to see where they could find housing that's permanent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, would you remind, repeating what street you live on?
Caballo Lane. It's Wheeler Estates.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? I believe there's a lady that put her hand up.
I also live on Caballo Lane 602.
If you could, please introduce yourself to the commission.
Couldn't hear you what?
If you could, please introduce yourself to the commission.
Definitely. My name's Rita Graciestine, and I live at 602 Caballo Lane at Wheeler Estates. I have two questions and two comments about the addition of the 165 apartments that are added to the Evergreen area. My first question is, what type of unintended future consequences did Chairman Bart think might be happening in the future?
This is a chance for you to speak. When it's the commissioners' turn to speak, then any questions you have should be addressed at that time.
I have one more. Should I wait until...
Sure. No, now's the time.
I know that South Windsor Superintendent of Schools said that the local schools can absorb the number of students expected for this development. I wanted to know, how much money does it cost to educate each new student in one year? And my other two are comments. One was about the four-story building, which seems very high compared to all the surrounding homes of Evergreen Walk. You know, it would be nice if that could be lowered to maybe three floors, like Tempo already has. And let's leave the rest of the land as open space since the construction of Evergreen, many animals' homes have been displaced, and we have right behind us the wildlife corridor between the apartments and Wheeler Estates. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to Commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein will give her a chance to finish up. Thank you.
So with respect to Application 2207P, the text amendment, I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cavignaro.
Thank you. I do have one clarification for the text amendment. So from my understanding, and anyone can answer this, just to verify, so the affordable component within that regulation is being raised into the 12% region, I think, like 12.7%. However, and again, this question pertains to both applications, so I'll ask it now. It's really to give... How do I put it? Blanking on the word, but essentially, for this application, it's 12.7 for the text amendment, but within the units that are being proposed, it's still 10%, if I'm correct. Just trying to understand this. It's just within the text amendment that the affordable component will be raised, whereas 08, it stays 10%.
That's not correct.
That's not? Okay.
No, no. The text amendment reads 12%. The proposal with your special exception request is 12.7%. So it's actually larger with your next request.
Gotcha.
But the text that's written in the red is 12%.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you for the clarification.
Just to further clarify that, Alan, if, say, this applicant didn't come in and another applicant came in, they would be able to do just a 10% affordability?
Unless they took advantage of the second part of the...
Correct. Unless they wanted to do more than 12.7, I believe it is, correct?
No, they would take advantage of what's in red here, the 12%. So...
12%.
Yeah, if it was a different developer and this was just on the books, they could either take care of the 10% as in the black there, or they'd have the option to do the 12% with the two bedrooms at 65%, like it's shown here.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foley.
On this application, I have nothing.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. First, let me comment on the change to Tamarack Avenue. I think you captured the intent of my comment at the previous meeting and actually improved on it, so I'm very happy with the use of Tamarack Avenue. I have a technicality question. We've seen the roads in Evergreen Walk get relabeled, including parts of Tamarack Avenue. Will we be protected if, for some reason unrelated to this project, the road gets relabeled?
I think the intent of Tamarack at the time, that the adoption of the regulations what's going to be in place, so I think you're protected, yes.
Thank you. I like, one thing I like about that is that it does not create a number of non-conforming structures, which always bothers me when that happens, and dealing with non-conforming structures leads to all kinds of issues down the road. So the idea that we're not creating by using Tamarack Avenue instead of a fixed distance, we're avoiding creating non-conforming buildings, specifically some of the existing residence buildings that are already there. I have no problem with going to vinyl, especially considering that there are many other ways to put vinyl up besides clavert, so I have no problem with that. I like seeing a greater than 10% affordable, and I think some accommodation needs to be made to encourage the use of two bedrooms for... Because we don't have a lot of family affordable housing in this town, so I would love to see more family affordable housing show up in the town. I was involved in an incident in Texas this past week. I won't get into details, but it was a woman with four children, three children, very sad situation. I'd like her to be able to find a place to live that could accommodate her family if she happened to live in South Windsor. I don't understand, what's the need to go from 40 years to 20 years? I don't know, either Attorney Pearson or Mr. Lamson could discuss that.
Commissioner Wagner, Robin Pearson. It comes down to feasibility, financial feasibility for a development, and it's difficult to divorce this application from the next special exception amendment to the general plan application. But we have proposed, as we will get into later, a condition that would allow 12.7% of the units to be, or require them to be affordable, more than is suggested even in this text amendment. And that works at 40 years, but if the commission, once we cut to the next portion of this permitting process, were to not be happy with 12.7% affordable housing as our suggested ratio for this development, it would be a serious blow to this particular project, and it might not be feasible to bring it to fruition. So with the text having to divide the hearing up, the hearings on these subjects, you know, apart from each other, by proposing a text amendment right now that says that it would be if you are providing more than, I should clarify, 12.5% of the housing, not 12%, but 12.5% of the housing as affordable pursuant to the definition, then you could have the minimum requirement for deed restriction would be 20 years. But that's a minimum. But it allows some flexibility so that if, once you get to the special exception component of the application, there had to be, because the commission felt there had to be a higher percentage, it might still work if you had a lesser period of deed restriction. So I'm not saying that we're opposed to 40 years as a deed restriction. I'm just telling you right now that we know it can work at 12.7%. But if there were to be a change as we go forward, then we'd have a serious issue as to whether or not the application... as we go forward, then we'd have a serious issue as to whether or not the application still works. So that's why, because it's bifurcated, holding the text amendment to a minimum of 20 years provides the flexibility for the commission on a special exception to be able to, if it's appropriate, extend that to a higher period, 30 years, 40 years. So that's the reason. And I know it sort of puts you in a bit of a conundrum as to, you know, what you want to do with that section, but that's the reason for it. So what I'm telling you is that it may not be viable at more than 12.7% for more than 20 years.
So I've been involved in some large solar projects where we're discussing terms and conditions going out 20, 25 years. And the consideration there was the ability to obtain financing, depending on what those conditions looked like, that far in the future. Is that what we're talking about here, financing, or what are we talking about here?
You know, what I would like to do at this point is ask Mr. Rappaport to come up and respond to that in more detail. I know enough to be able to tell you that it may not work if there has to be more than 12.7% at 40 years. But I don't know enough to be able to go into those details that you've just asked.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Howard Rappaport with Continental Properties. In response to your question, amplifying what Robin touched upon, the reason that the proposal in front of you includes 12.7% with a 20-year term is because we know that that is financially viable, meaning that we can finance the project and also undertake the project to obtain the returns that we would need in the market to go forward. If we're required to go to 40 years, we could consider that, but only at 12.7%. And if that's the pleasure of the board, we'd ask for some discussion of that, to understand that. But we know that it works at 12.7% at a 20-year term. And I don't know if I've answered your question, but I, you know, can provide more context if you'd like it.
So the text that I have in front of me has a 40-year number, but then down below it has a 20-year number. If we go with the, you know, paragraph II and all the justifications for going to 20-year term, does that prevent us, in the next hearing, in the special exception hearing, from asking for, I don't know, 25 years or 30 years? Or are we getting tied into 20 years at this point by putting that language in there? I would like to be able to continue that discussion in the next hearing, but I want to make sure we're not tying our hands here.
If you're putting a requirement of 20 years in, I don't know how you later on require it to be 35 or 40 as a requirement. I mean, maybe the developer can offer it and you accept it, but it seems to me that your text amendment's going to establish a requirement. And if you're only going to require 20 years, I don't know how we're going to force you, I mean, unless Attorney, I mean, Pearson thinks something different. But to me, I don't know how a special exception, unless it would be an offer by the developer to say, well, deed restricted 40 years, the commission could require it, when you don't have it required in your regulation.
I do believe that the way it's written, it speaks to a term of no less than 20 years. It shall be reduced to a term of no less than 20 years, which leaves some flexibility in there for something more. I understand your concern about evaluating that in the context of a special exception, but I do believe it leaves flexibility for the commission to require, at the time of the special exception, the ability to say 40 years. But...
My concern is, I don't think the need for affordable housing is going to go away in 20 years. And...
I guess that was my comment too, is, you know, we have a regulation being proposed with a 40-year restriction. We're being asked to lessen it to 20 years and we're increasing affordable by 2%. To me, I just don't know in the long run if that's, you know, the long game, if that's the best approach. Maybe, under that scenario, maybe 10% is better for 40 years. I think what I'm hearing the applicant say, though, is they can do 40 years at 12.7%, but if it was some higher percentage, that would not be doable. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so your proposal, in the next hearing, at 12.7%, if it were made at 40 years, that was doable, but your concern is a higher percentage of affordable. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what was being said, because that's what I understood to be said.
So basically, the commission would be saying, well, 10% for 40 years versus 12% for 40 years versus 15% for 20 years, we'd be weighing those considerations? Is that what we're saying here?
That is a possibility, yes, that you would be in that situation of weighing it. I have just spoken with my client, and I know this is beginning to sound a little bit confusing. We don't want you to be confused. We are very much looking for an approval this evening. We've put it out there for you. Certainly, we can, we believe we can make this work at 12.7% for 40 years. And we're going to rely on just your understanding of that situation and suggest that if you were in favor, instead of putting in the text amendment, that no less than 40 years, we would be acceptable to that. So that takes that particular issue off the table with regard to the text amendment. I just leave you with a thought, that if we get to the special exception and you're looking for more than what this says, this section would say 12.5%, that we would have an issue. So...
Well, I mean...
Still looking confused. So what I'm saying is, we are offering to accept the suggestion of your planner, that this regulation be Section 4.215A2C2, have a limit of, if an applicant comes in with a proposal that exceeds 12.5% in terms of the affordables that are being provided, that the term for which that would be applied to that term of affordability could be 40 years. So we would accept the planner's suggestion.
So are we saying that only the excess above 12.5 would apply to the 20-year, or?
No.
I'm a little confused and...
If an applicant, up above it says 10%. If you come in with an application and you're proposing 10% of the units being affordable, it says 40-year timeframe. If you go down to the second paragraph, it says, "But if applicant, if you come in with 12.5%, then we'd be..."
Point of order?
Pardon me?
Or point of information. My draft is saying 12%. I'm wondering if I have the correct draft.
You do. It is 12%.
But if the applicant is looking to make it 12.5, I'm not going to reject that.
Okay. No, 12%.
Yeah.
12%.
Okay.
There was a revision. So the term, we would agree to 40 years, no less than 40 years, at 12%.
I understand when you take a project and you go to all the banks out there and you say, "These are the terms that we can get from this town," they're going to look at it and say, "Is this something I want to finance?" And that's really what it means to make it workable, okay? And I think that's where we are here. Am I not correct?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay. I don't know what to say. I guess I'll go on to my next comment. Where's Caballo Lane?
It would be immediately south.
Wheeler Road, between Pleasant Hill Condos and Hampton, and there's a street, Wheeler Road. And that leads into Caballo Estates.
Okay, so that's a little, okay, I'm familiar with that.
It's immediately south of this development proposal.
So then the other thing here, on this paragraph two, II, if the number of affordable housing units exceeds, equals or exceeds 12%, are we talking about only new units or all units, 12% of all units in this zone? Because I don't know if the language is clear enough on that. We've got a project coming in here. They're going to say, hey, we'd be happy to do 12%. But does this language cover a specific project, or does it drive us to say, well, how many affordable housing units do we have all over the zone?
Well, this text amendment limits it to 365, so you're going to see another text amendment to change the number, right? So this is for this project?
Yeah, but there's now 165 new units. Are we talking, and again, I want to make sure that the language does what these folks want it to do. Does it apply to the 165, or does it apply to the, what is it, 365?
Apply to the project, which in this case is 165 units. If it wasn't 100, you know, if it was a 30-unit project, it would apply to 30 units. So it would be whatever the proposal is.
Okay, so I'm asking Attorney Pearson to read this sentence again and make sure it's not doing something you don't want it to do.
I think if you look at the regulation, and Michelle, maybe you can confirm that, but it says in E, 4.2.15A2E, that the size of a multifamily residential use, which is under consideration at any one time, may be limited. So that in and of itself speaks to specific projects. Clearly, it's our understanding that this applies to whatever project is being proposed under this new regulation, should you adopt it. So there's no question but that it only applies to the new project going forward, in our mind.
Okay, so, I mean, one advantage of getting that statement on the record is, regardless of how someone might interpret this 10 years from now, we all understand that this applies to the new project and not to the total.
Correct. And we certainly underscore that for the legislative history with regard to this.
That's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before we leave that, can I just make sure we all are clear, that we have ceded to the suggestion of the planner, that the limitation be 40 years in this second paragraph?
Right, so in the red paragraph, strike 20 years and put 40 years into that, which is the third line above the bottom. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dexter?
I just thank you for the concession on the 40. That's a big thing for me, so I appreciate that. Bart, would we be talking at the site plan level, position of buildings for our Caballo friends, or is that something later on?
I believe at site, site plan level.
Okay, okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Carey? Okay, thank you. Okay, looking specifically at the text amendment here, I just don't think it goes far enough. The 365 up in E is fine. I wouldn't have an issue with that. Going down to C, our goal is to go, and the state's goal is 10%. But to get to 10%, you need to have your text amendments higher than 10%. Otherwise, you're never going to achieve the 10%. So I really feel that the underlined paragraph, which talks about the residential component, provides for a minimum, I believe that should be 12.5% and the affordable component. And then later on, where you get to the double I part of the text amendment, and this is not a this or that, it's language for the text amendment, and the developer can use that language however they see fit. But I really feel that the double I paragraph, instead of it saying if it exceeds 12%, it should exceed 15% of the unit shown on the general plan. And then it may be increased to 65% of the total unit. For that, you're increasing the two-bedroom units from 83 to 100 two-bedroom units. I know that the proposed affordable component would be 13 two-bedrooms and eight one-bedrooms. And moving it up to 15%, I think changes that maybe four units. But I think it's a necessary minimum for us going forward. I mean, text amendments is a time when we're going to change things. And I don't think, you know, we should change the text amendment to something that's not where we want to be. This is not going to get us to our goal. It'll get us in the direction of our goal, but having it at the requested minimum of 10% and 12% just doesn't cut it in my book. I appreciate moving from 20 to 40 years. I would not have supported it at 20 years. And I'm going to have, find a hard time to support the current percentages that are in this text amendment. Also, the switch from like a hardy siding to a vinyl clavoured siding, it's not as strong of a product, not as long-lasting. I think everybody's seen vinyl siding that gets damaged by a weed whacker. I would rather see the first floor of the units would still have to be a currently acceptable product. And any units above the first floor, or floors that are in contact with the ground, could be the vinyl clavoured. But I know apartments take a beating, and I think it's in the best interest of the project and the regulations that the first floor stays as is current in the regulations. Turn to other commissioners. Is there any other questions? Turn to other commissioners, is there any other questions or?
Comments?
Let me just go on.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, on the vinyl, um, I think it was Attorney Pearson or Mr. Lamson, uh, said that there are other vinyl products that could be used under the current regulations. So if we're making them not use clabored and they come in with lap, uh, what's the right term? Another form, another product that has a vertical appearance, um, you still have the same issue. Could be lawn mowers, could be tricycles, um, you know, anything can damage siding.
A, a lot of the products that they mentioned are products that might be on a soffit or, um, up above the ground. But I don't believe we've ever allowed, uh, vinyl siding, uh, as a product on a lower floor of, um, a building. Michelle, maybe you have more information on that?
Uh, not, excuse me, not in the gateway development zone.
Would the Architecture Review Committee be a better place to deal with this or?
Not necessarily because they are an advisory committee to us. It's really our, uh, obligation. They are advisory to us. So, uh, it's, it's our responsibility.
I mean, I, I guess I share your concern that any kind of vinyl product at the level of the ground, not, not necessarily the first floor, but, um, could be subject to damage by whatever's going on on the ground level.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Bernstein?
I hadn't given this thought before, but now that we're discussing it, it seems unusual to me that this is called out specifically in the text amendment. It seems, and we're talking about a, an exterior material, this is something that we could probably discuss with experts in here for hours. Would this be something that maybe shouldn't be in the text amendment and should be part of the discussion when we get to site plan?
I think they put it in the text amendment, uh, to get it hashed out right away. You know, you could ask them why they're including it in the text amendment now instead of during a site plan application.
Maybe, maybe before I could.
Michelle, did you have?
Well, I just have a comment. I mean, when you're dealing with affordable housing and you're trying to, in this case, incentivize maybe affordable housing, I think it's an attempt on the, and I don't want words in your mouth, but the applicant's attempt to try to increase the affordable housing but, but make it work for them as well. So, you know, kind of like, um, a sliding scale, you know, kind of like what they need to do to be able to meet the increase of affordable housing, being able to reduce the quality or the, the material used, I don't want to say quality, but the type of materials used. So it would be a trade-off you'd want to have as part of a regulation if you're going to do it, um, as, you know, a regular thing with a affordable housing project, I would think. I don't think you want to leave it to chance if you're the developer.
But if, if the applicant went with the 10 percent up above, then they wouldn't be able to use it. So I don't see how 2 percent is, and the numbers just don't add up to me. I mean, increasing it, um, by 17 two-bedrooms and changing everything, uh, to vinyl possibly, you know? And I understand that the plan also shows stone, um, but, um...
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that or you want me to wait?
No, please, Paul, you won. It was Paul's question.
Okay, um, I'm not a builder, but I've been around these applications for a long time and I know that, for instance, somaticious claverting can be just as easily damaged by, you know, bad treatment at ground level. It, it is also susceptible. I know that the applicant is proposing to use mixed media, you know, different types of materials on the ground floor. I think the, that would be an issue that could be raised definitely at the site plan phase. Your planner has suggested that you have a provision in there that goes to, um, the design review group. Obviously, as the chairman pointed out, that's a recommendation, but still, ultimately, this project has to be able to pencil out. It has to be able to be built. And I know that the applicant has put a lot of time into trying to figure out how to make it work with addressing the affordable housing concerns that you've raised. And that's why we are where we are. And I know there are two gentlemen standing up behind me and I would like to give them an opportunity to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I'm going to introduce Alan Lamson again because we have an idea, I think, to address the concern you have about the, the first floor and getting damaged, um, because we recognize it's a, it's a concern of yours. So Alan, you want to talk about the idea?
Yeah, so, so first, let me just, for clarification, the other materials I discussed are, are not soffit materials. Um, I know of houses that have used vinyl board and battened siding completely on the entire house. So just, it's a side.
Okay, but not in the gateway development zone, correct?
I'm sorry?
Not in the gateway development zone?
No, I'm just saying, the product, these other products are used as siding. It was mentioned that they are used as soffits. So I'm just clarifying, okay?
We'll fix that.
The, the second, the second thing is that, um, if you, if you look at, um, some of the material that was submitted with the other application that we're not allowed to talk about yet, um, you'll see that on all those elevations, in almost every case, there has been provided a water table on the bottom two to three feet of all the buildings, which is of a much more durable material. It's a stone or it's a brick or something like that. Purpose of that is specifically to make sure that there's no mechanical damage to the siding at that low, low level, either, either from lawn mowers or weed whackers or whatever it is. We're not the architect on, on, on that project, but I can tell you that we have used the water table approach on a lot of materials over the years. Doesn't apply here, but one of the first drawbacks of using Drive-It on buildings was the damage that occurred to the bottom two feet of the buildings with lawn mowers, snow blowers, weed whackers. If you use it in places like shopping centers where kids push their scooters and their bicycles up against it. So I've always advocated for that bottom two or three feet to be a, a harder material water table. And that's what we're proposing in the other application we can't talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Just to reiterate what Alan is saying, so the, when we talk about the water table, we're talking about the point up to the bottom of the window, usually about three feet. So we're agreeable to modify what we have proposed to say that we would not use vinyl clapboard in that area, that it would be a, a product that complies with the current regulations. Most likely, it's going to be a, a stone product, um, which I believe the chairman would address your concerns.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
So are, are we saying that we should modify the wording here to say vinyl siding is allowed, uh, above, um, 36 inches from the ground or something like that?
Mr. Rappaport has indicated yes, that would be acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Foley? Oh, sorry, I saw the light. Commissioners, any, anything else? Uh, how do the other commissioners feel about what I said for the percentages? I, I'd like to, well, if you could, put that on the record.
I, I agree with you 100 percent. In order for us to, can, to get to the 10 percent, we need to, we can't stay at 10 percent. We need to increase to get there and I'm 100 percent with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
I agree. I would point out that there are other ways to get to 10 percent, um, such as by having, um, housing commission projects where there is available land in town, but I don't see us getting there with those kind of projects without doing something with any new projects. So I'm happy with the suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to chime in? Commissioner Bernstein?
So your recommendation is 15? Is that what I heard?
My recommendation for I paragraph is 12.5 percent and for, uh, paragraph double I, 15 percent.
What I think I heard the applicant say or suggest in various ways is that anything that exceeds what's in here jeopardizes the feasibility of the project. So it becomes, at what point can you or can't you do this? And I don't know the answer.
Commissioner Bernstein, you did hear us correctly. It would, it would be a big blow. It would be a real blow if, if that's what the commission needed. Can I point out for you that your affordable housing plan that you just adopted has a range that this project would fall within? I believe your range is 12 to 15. This text amendment, we, we started this application, you had not adopted that. We offered 10 percent. We've now gone up to what will ultimately be 12.7 percent. So we've tried to make this happen in a way that would benefit the community, the town, by providing more affordable housing, um, also in a manner that complies with your newly adopted affordable housing plan. I mean, if, if, if the commission was intent on making 15 percent a minimum, you did not do that in your plan. And I will tell you that we're at a point where we know we can make this work for you at 12.7 at 40 years. After that, I don't know if there's a project. You've heard a lot of people speak in favor through the communications that you received. You've, I was struck by the information that was in those letters and, and the amount of support for this application, because it is going to make a difference to have those 165 units built as an extension of the Evergreen Walk, um, development, it's going to make a huge difference. And, uh, I'm just telling you that we are not, we are so unsure that this could happen if you were adamant about the 15 percent at 40 years, that we would actually ask that if, if first, we'd ask that you take a straw vote to see if that's really where we are. And if we are, then we would ask that you keep this hearing open so that we can decide. This would, this would be a big blow so that we can decide whether or not this project still has a life.
I, I don't believe it's in the purview of planning and zoning takes straw votes.
Some commissions do, some don't, but if you wanted...
Correct, no?
This commission has never had that as a practice.
Okay.
I wouldn't recommend it tonight.
Commissioner Cavignaro?
Thank you. I have to agree with Commissioner Bernstein. As much as I think we'd all like to have 15 percent of these be affordable, I, I think we're also mindful that, you know, we, we raise it too much and then all of a sudden it's, it's not attainable anymore. And so I, I, I thank him for asking the question because I was thinking the exact same thing. Really just a comment, not, not a question at all, but I, I just want to put it out there that I, I, I do feel and I do think that if we try and raise it from what it sits at right now to, to 15 percent, I'm not sure if this project is going to see the day of light if we, we vote for it at 15 percent. And I'm not sure if that's what the goal is of, of our commission. I want to see this project go through because it, it abides by all our regulations. And again, Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but just looking at it right now, um, they've, they've agreed at the number that it is right now that they can do that. And I think any more, um, like they said, um, I'm not sure if we could have them come back and, and look at the number and see if it's attainable, but right now, I'm, I'm concerned that if we raise it, this just application is just not going to work out. It's just a comment, thank you.
Commissioner Dexter?
I'm not very good at math, but I just did some. So at 12.5 percent, that's 13 units. At 15 percent, it's 15 units. So we're only off by two units. Am I crazy there or is, that's just simple math, right? I'm not doing the math either. So, what's that?
I think we should talk in terms of units because I think that's in absolute terms.
I do too.
Howard Rappaport again, I'm sorry.
The percents are bogging us down a little bit. So if we are, we're really off two, and just go with me on this, can we take away two, two-bedroom units to get, I mean, what can, what can, how can we make everybody feel good?
Again, talking again, this is Howard Rappaport. Talking again in absolute units, we've proposed 21 units of the total 165. Okay, which that works out to, and you can check the math, 12.7 percent. That's why we're not at 12.5. There's no mathematical way, uh, with half units to, to be at 12.5. So we, we opted rather than being at 12.3, I think, to add the extra unit to be at 12.7, 21 units. In order to comply with a request for 15 percent, that's four more units.
Four more, okay.
So in absolute terms, that's what we're talking about.
15 percent would be 24.75, I believe, units.
Effectively, yes, 25, that's right.
So we're off four units.
So if we make paragraph two, Roman numeral little two, um, 12.5, that doesn't change anything in your plan. If we make paragraph roman numeral I, 12 percent, um, I mean, that's kind of a step in the right direction, maybe a compromise.
What, could you repeat your?
Okay. They're saying the project remains feasible with 40 years and 12.5 percent in paragraph two.
Yep.
You were also suggesting in paragraph one that we make that 12 and a half percent, but we could make that 12 percent basically get the same effect.
You can ask them if they're willing to accept that.
I mean, let me, while, while you're thinking, let me continue. I mean, my interpretation is you're trying to implement paragraph two.
No, they're, they want to, they want us to accept all the language that they're proposing.
But the, the plan with 12.7 percent affordable, they want to take advantage of paragraph two, which allows more two-bedroom units. Okay, so they're trying to go down paragraph two, but obviously they need paragraph one if they can't go down paragraph two. It's, it's either one or two, not both really, or one and two or one only, I guess.
If, if I might, um, yeah, suggestion, the first paragraph, I'm sorry, Alan Lamson.
Yeah, Alan, if you could speak into the microphone, please. Yeah, there it is, thank you.
If the first paragraph said, instead of 10, if it said 12.5, that would be okay.
That gives you more, that gives the town more.
That's a minimum of more. If the second, sub-paragraph two, um, said it exceeds 12.5, then these things fall into, fall into place if you exceed 12.5. I don't know what happens otherwise between 12.5 and 15. Nothing, you know?
But if your concern is to make sure that your text is a little stronger, then... But if your concern is to make sure that your text is a little stronger, then by increasing it to 12.5 in the first paragraph, that does that. And then the second paragraph would say, if an application comes in that exceeds 12.5, then you could take advantage of the second paragraph.
I mean, we all know that we're dealing with an integer number of apartments, and therefore it's never going to come out to exactly 12.5. So it's going to be 12...
Unless it's a thousand.
Yeah, the next project's going to be 12.53, or in this case, 12.7. So really, they're both using the same number now where we are.
But also remember, we're dealing with a text amendment only for the gateway zone.
Yeah.
There are only possibly three pieces that would be impacted by this.
Let me tell you what I would like to see happen.
Right.
I would like to see this project go forward. I'm very much in favor of it.
Let's not show any predeterminations.
Well, I'm...
Focus.
We frequently say things in these hearings about how we, I wanted it to be designed so the project can go forward. I want, I like to see projects that are financially viable, okay?
And I think that's...
And I think that we need to give some attention to the affordable housing component, but that isn't the only reason we're doing it. It's an important factor. And you're, I'm very grateful that you're trying so hard to accommodate that. But we really do not want to kill this project by putting things in that really, in the big picture for South Windsor as a whole, don't get us that much closer to our goal for affordable housing. So I am happy to see 12.5 in both places, frankly.
Okay.
We would, we appreciate your non-position.
So you appreciate, I just want to make sure I'm clear on your language for paragraph I, which is the black paragraph, or black letters. You're offering the 12.5 for that paragraph?
Correct.
Okay. So for I, strike out the 10 percent and add the 12.5 percent. I don't see much benefit in paragraph double I to switch from the suggested 12.5 percent, the number of two-bedroom units, as... They're adding 17 two-bedroom units from the one-bedroom units, which is a significant amount of money. It doesn't, the numbers aren't really changing, other than dropping the units down, or the one-bedroom units down from, from 82 to 65, and increasing the two-bedroom units from 83 to 100. I understand it's a start in the right direction for affordable housing. I'll turn to Commissioner Carey, who's been waiting patiently.
So, the one thing I wanted to look at...
And if you could, just tilt your microphone down.
Oh, sorry.
Just the very end.
That one?
Yeah, okay. It's about as low as it gets, I guess.
When we look at this, right, it went, in the proposal that they have, they're only doing 61. some percent of two-bedroom units. But here it says to increase to 65 percent. So my suggestion would be, in keeping with what you were doing, Commissioner Wagner, drop this to 62 percent. Right? Because that's all they're proposing, is actually 61.7. So why are we going all the way up to 65?
Does the applicant have a response to that?
I'm sorry, I was having difficulty hearing the question, so...
That's, that's my fault.
Mr. Rappaport?
We're agreeable to a 62, 62 percent limitation. It doesn't need to be 65. That's not our proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Glad you heard it, that's good. 62 percent.
Yeah, I don't know if that really makes much of a difference.
Well, it makes a difference if your concern is the ratio of two bedrooms to one bedrooms. It does make a change there in itself. There are many people that think two bedrooms are, you know, beneficial and a good thing, and others may have some concern with it. But that does limit it, so it makes it tighter in terms of what you're concerned about.
Okay. So that would be, 38 percent would be one bedroom, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Where did we end up?
Commissioner Foley?
Where did we end up with, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the vinyl clapboard. I mean, the Hardy board and the durable products that we've had in this, we're cheapening, and again, like Alan said, this is not, possibly not the last application for housing here. So it's Pandora's box, and everything counts. And I don't understand the necessity to, and Alan, please elaborate, what's the real necessity to going to vinyl compared to the Hardy boards and the masonry of the past?
It's a matter of determining the bottom line of the project. Hardy siding is extremely expensive.
But it lasts forever.
Hardy siding is extremely expensive, and good maintenance lets materials last. So the other thing that I want to really be careful about, my comment about there's only three sites, two of those, two of those sites you've already determined a use for. One of them is Unit 7D. While it's vacant right now, it's part of the commercial offset for the hotel, I mean, for Tempo. And so it can't be made into residential unless this commission does something on Tempo's approval to change the ratio. It has to be commercial.
Where's, could you point out 7D?
7D is the one. 7D is the parcel, very small, about an acre or less, immediately north of the daycare.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Is everybody clear on that? Which unit it is?
Yep. It's on the west side of Tamarack, immediately north of the daycare. The hotel, the daycare, 7D.
It's between the 1,200-foot line and the 1,400-foot line.
It is. The other piece is Unit 8, which is the next piece just north of that, the larger piece. You have already approved that for senior living, for independent senior living. You've already approved that in the general plan. So unless you change the general plan, you can't put residential on there. But it's the only pieces of land that haven't been developed, which is my criteria, my criteria. But again, nobody can, nobody can walk in and go to the building department and give them plans, or come to you with a site plan for anything other than what you've already approved in the general plan.
Okay.
Okay? So just so, so everybody's clear, I was only talking about, nobody's going to tear down whatever it's called on Unit 3, which is the next one north, which is also senior independent living. Nobody's going to tear that down to build multifamily. I mean, it's built. I'm not counting that. It's the ones that are still vacant, I said, were the only possible ones that are available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there any other questions, comments, any reason to keep this public hearing open? Commissioners? Hearing none. We'll close this public hearing at... Pardon me? Did the applicant have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just one moment, please. May I just check with my colleague?
Sure, thank you.
At Attorney Pearson's request, this is what I wrote down as the latest changes we were talking about. In the first paragraph, we're looking at the 10 percent being 12.5 percent. The Tamarack Ave is indicated in red there. In the second paragraph, if the number of affordable housing units exceeds 12.5 percent, so we're taking off equals or, we're taking that off and we're saying exceeds 12.5 percent, it goes on, and then it would be increased to 62 percent, two bedrooms, and then the terms of 40 years as opposed to 20. Those would be the changes I have recorded.
We certainly agree with that, so...
Chairman, you got...
Mr. Chairman, did you have any?
Okay.
Michelle, I think you missed one. We said that the use of vinyl clapboard siding above three feet from the ground, I thought.
Above three feet from the ground, correct, okay. That, I think, is something...
And we agree to that also.
Okay.
And that's for deliberations.
Commissioner Foley?
Can we change that to second floor from...
That's what I had suggested, but... Okay, so is everybody clear what the text amendment changes are? Also, okay. Is there any reason to keep the public hearing open?
No. So at 36 inches is what we were talking about, because if you're talking about different materials for a whole floor, that can definitely interfere with the aesthetics of the, of the development also. But I think we'd be perfectly acceptable, we would accept 36 inches as a standard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, any reason? Okay, then we will close this public hearing at 8:58 PM. And we'll go on to our next item on our agenda, which is Evergreen Walk, the request to modify the general plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And I'm here this evening in lieu of Mr. Christopher Smith, my partner who is unable to be here. I'd like to, this is the application, the two applications involved in this particular public hearing. One is the amendment to the general plan, and the other is a special exception application for the multifamily development at 165 units. I'd like to introduce our team this evening. We're going to start out with Jim Cassidy, who is a consulting civil engineer on the project with Halassee Pearson and Cassidy. And also here is Mr. Howard Rappaport from Continental Properties. And we're going to be discussing more broadly some changes to the plans that we've made subsequent to the last public hearing on this, these two applications. The changes are really quite responsive to the comments that were raised by some commissioners. And Jim is going to go through that for you. And then we're going to move on to a set of conditions that we have proposed for your consideration with regard to adopting the special exception, which we hope you'll be able to do this evening. I would also like to mention, in case there are any questions, we do have other experts that are part of the team in the audience this evening. And should you have any questions, we, you know Alan Lamson is here, he's our consulting planner. Ron Baumengen from Fasson O'Neil is here. Should there be any questions that must be addressed by that engineering firm. And also Steve Mitchell is here. He is our traffic consultant. Recall that you went, you participated, you listened to a comprehensive presentation at the hearing in May. We don't propose to go through all of that again. And I'd also like to suggest that should this application be approved, or these applications, the special exception and the general plan amendment, many of the details that those gentlemen might address would be better postponed until a site plan review for the application. That said, we'd like to start off with Jim Cassidy, who will address specifically some comments that were made at the last hearing session. Jim?
Sorry, to begin for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm a professional engineer and principal with the firm of Halassee Pearson and Cassidy. My office is located at 630 Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. Here is that representing Continental Properties. This proposed the general plan amendment for Evergreen Walk, specifically dealing with parcel 7C. My purpose of being here this evening is to review some plans that we prepared in response to comments, I understand, were brought up at a prior meeting that deal with the walkability of our project and the sustainability of our project. The first plan I have up before you deals with the walkability of the project. I don't know what's better for the commission, if I use the mouse with the pointer, or if I use a laser pointer. I don't know if it's going to show up on your screen. Is it okay to use a laser pointer on your screen? So the first plan we have up here deals with the walkability of our project. The project is for 165 unit multifamily development. On this page, the Tempo project is off on the right-hand side, this grayed-out area are the existing buildings in Tempo, so off to the east side. It is at the end of Long Leaf Lane. The road actually stops at the entrance drive into the Tempo project. We are proposing to extend that driveway into the project and provide a loop throughout the project, actually two loops throughout the project, that would provide access to all the units within the development. There is the detention basin off on the west, then another one off on the south. If you were to go out there today for sidewalks, what you would find is there is a sidewalk along the north side along Leaf Lane, starts at the intersection of Tamarack, goes all the way just past the entrance drive into Tempo. We are proposing to extend that concrete walkway all the way along the north side of our new roadway system, eventually going past the clubhouse, which is in this location here, continuing past the clubhouse, and then eventually continuing along the northerly side of the roadway, until it gets to a point where it crosses our access drive, continuing along the westerly side of the parking area in front of buildings number four and five, these are the bigger multi-unit buildings, and then continuing back on the south side of the loop in front of this building, eventually down through the middle road, and then ultimately connecting back to itself in this location here, providing access back to the clubhouse. The approximate length at this point for that sidewalk is about 1,800 feet. That's the internal loop within the project itself. In addition to, in front of the clubhouse, you'll see another section of walkway that goes in front of the parking spaces in front of the clubhouse, continuing along the westerly side of this access road, and eventually coming and crossing the access road and continuing on to this brown line that we'll talk about shortly. I'll point out with the internal access side, or sorry, the internal sidewalk circulation, you're going to see a bunch of these red color areas. What we're looking at doing, anywhere there is a crosswalk of a roadway proposed, we have a photo of a stamped concrete crosswalk, so it'd be definitely demarcated throughout the... so it'll be definitely demarcated throughout the development to make sure we have a safe area for pedestrians and bikelists to cross. In addition to, within the roadway system, as we've done in other developments, we're proposing to have a series of what we call rumble strips. These rumble strips would be constructed out of cobblestone pavers. They are a traffic calming effect to help slow down traffic throughout the development. You'll be looking at several of these rumble strips throughout the entire development in strategic locations. This is an example of a rumble strip that we have in a project that we did several years ago in Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Continuing on, if you were to go out there today, you would find there's an existing nature path that basically circumference is the south side of the detention basin, then continues through along the edge of the wetlands, continuing on the westerly side of the second detention basin, then continuing on to the remaining portion of the Evergreen Walk development off to the north. As part of this development, we're proposing to make some modifications and actually extensions to that nature walk system. There is a portion of that walk that will have to get relocated along the south side, so that dark brown line would be the relocated portion. In addition to, as I mentioned previously, this concrete walk we're proposing to do is to feed into an additional piece of nature walk that goes behind these units on the north side of the project, ultimately connecting back to the existing nature walk and then continuing off to the north. If you were to take a look at the entire nature walk system throughout our entire development, we have a total length at this point of about 3,500 feet within the development itself. So about 5/8 of a mile within the development. One of the other things we were asked to look at was emergency access. I'll start with this plan. Off on the northeast corner of the development, you see this gray area. I'm going to shift one page to get to a blow-up of that area. So if you were to take a look at the existing Tempo development, what you'd find is that at the end of the parking area, there's actually a stub of pavement that already comes all the way up to the property line. This is our proposed, right now our proposed building, unit number 12, our building number 12 in our development. What we're proposing as part of this development is to provide a emergency access driveway between the existing edge of the pavement in Tempo, connecting to the driveway that services some parking spaces and garage on this northerly edge of building number 12. The purpose of this drawing is basically to show a feasible location for this emergency access. We haven't got into the actual details of methods of construction. That's why we have this area kind of showing as a green brick. We're not sure whether it's going to be paved or like grass growth repavers or whatever product at this point. But we just wanted to show where we're thinking it would go. And then more importantly, just to show based upon this configuration, what I've done is I've implemented a turning maneuver for a ladder fire truck. So you see the red, the blue, and the yellow lines that indicates the path of a ladder truck coming from Tempo through this driveway and then into our development to show that it will not interfere with any parked cars or the cars in the, in front of the garages can easily make the maneuver through this project. In addition to, there was a question about sustainability. What we've basically done here is we've come up with a chart. I've worked, I've worked with several property, sorry, several developments with Continental Properties. They're always forefront in trying to make their projects leading edge and implement any cost-saving measures such as energy-efficient measures they possibly can. So this is a list of things that we're proposing to include as part of this development. Number one, electric pumps will be provided within the areas of the multifamily, I'm sorry, common areas of the multifamily residential buildings. You'll notice an asterisk after all, a bunch of the electrical components or electrical items. Basically, that is, we just need to confirm that there's adequate supply with every source to propose all these electrical features. With that being said, in case the question comes up, why are we only looking at doing electric heat pumps in common areas? Again, I've worked with several different developments, Continental Properties, and what they find is if we try to do electric heat pumps in the individual units, it becomes, number one, quite expensive. What happens is, number one, the unit itself is a lot more money. Number two, the electrical service to provide for that unit, now we need to provide a 60-amp breaker. So I had to increase the service from 100 to 150 amp for each one of the units. So if I add up the overall numbers, it adds a significant amount of money to the overall project. So in addition to, one of the problems we have is the overall maintenance of individual heat pumps. There's not a lot of vendors that will provide the service. Becomes a, they tend to be a little bit more problematic, and therefore, overall, there's a lot, a lot more costs to maintain that type of units, which gets added to the unit costs, the rent of the unit. So we prefer to do the heat pumps within the common areas where we have better control and we can deal with it on a common area. In addition to, in the clubhouse, we're proposing to have a geothermal heat pump for the clubhouse itself. We always provide electric ranges within all the units and also the clubhouse. All our appliances are going to be Energy Star appliances. All our windows are high-efficiency Energy Star windows. The lighting fixtures in all the common areas would be LED, so high-efficiency LED lighting in common areas. Parking lot lighting outside, obviously we dark sky-approved lighting fixtures. In addition to, there will be LED high-efficiency lighting fixtures. All the toilets we're using within the development will be low-flow toilets. And then the faucets and showerheads also will be low gallons-per-minute faucets and showers. Solar panels, again, we've used solar panels in several developments as we're working with Continental. We are, we're willing to consider solar panels on the clubhouse, but ultimately, based upon the final design of that building and where we can actually put solar panels, we need to make sure, number one, based upon the price, it would be possible and practical to actually do those solar panels. But we have done on other projects. We are committed to trying to make it work for this project, but we need to find out, but when we get into the final design at site plan, if we can actually make it work. In addition to, we're also proposing a bike share program. I'm going to go back a couple slides just to kind of show you where we're looking at this point to put bikes here. In the center photo on this screen, this is a typical, typical bike share rack that we would have just outside the clubhouse in the amended area. We're proposing to have a larger pad, so this is where the majority of the bikes should be stored. In addition to scattered throughout the project, you would see a bunch of light blue rectangles. Those light blue rectangles are going to be additional areas. We're also proposing bike racks so they can get dispersed or deposited throughout the development neatly. Finally, EV charging stations. Continental Properties was one of the first residential developers in the state of Connecticut to actually put EV charging stations into one of their residential developments. For this particular development, it's important to know that we'll probably be starting with about 10 EV charging stations. We'd also be providing conduit throughout the development, so as needed, we can up it to about 10% of the overall surface parking spaces. But more importantly, to know that because this, what this type of development is, 115 of the units actually have individual garages. Per the building code, we're actually required to wire those garages for the potential for EV charging units or outlets. So that can bring the total of EV charging outlets within those garages to 115, therefore bringing the potential for a total of EV charging areas to about 130. So you're talking almost 33% of the overall parking spaces in the development would have the ability to have the EV charging capabilities. So with that, I'm going to conclude my portion of the presentation. Howard, this is David Wood. Sure.
Good evening again, Howard Rappaport. I just want to amplify and correct a couple of items that Jim mentioned. Our smart growth initiatives and our walkability initiatives that we've discussed tonight are, we hope, in response to comments and some concerns that were raised, I think principally at least articulated by Commissioner Cavanero and Commissioner Wagner. We've tried to be responsive. One thing I want to correct that Jim said, normally in the other seven developments we've been fortunate enough to build in Connecticut, we've used gas ranges. Here, we're proposing electric ranges, so I just want to be, want to be clear about that. We have not previously utilized heat pumps or geothermal heat pumps. So that is a, we're happy to propose that here. We think that's a meaningful change. And with respect to the EV car charging stations, what we're actually proposing is, they're each, as has been pointed out to us, each of the 115 units which have a garage will by, I believe your code, have to be serviced or set up so that someone can at least plug in an EV car charger into, into, within their garage. So we're left with 50 units in total that would not have that available to them. So what we are proposing today is to, correcting what Jim said, is that we would start off with four EV car chargers, and we would put in conduit for future expansion of that as that's needed. So we have the conduit there, and we don't have to go ahead and dig up the macadam or grass areas to, to put in more than the original four EV car chargers. And we were, in fact, literally the very first community in the state in Rocky Hill in 2013 to put in car charger, so EV car charger. So we, we understand that it's a meaningful issue and one that's, over time, will, will require more demand for it. So just to clarify some things Jim said. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. So the only other thing we wanted to do was to go through the proposed conditions that you have before you. I have a draft version that was submitted that had a date of 6/21/22 on it. Based on the conversation that we've had with regard to the text amendment, some of these items would change. I'd just like to read them through with what I believe to be the change, and I'll point those out. So these are conditions that we are suggesting that would be applicable to the special exception and the general plan also. But certainly, okay. And that address your concerns and would work for us and allow this project to go forward. So the approval conditions we're suggesting, condition number one, it reads 12.7% of the total number of dwelling units, i.e. 21 dwelling units, shall be reserved for occupancy by families earning 80% or less than the area median income, AMI. Condition number two, the 21 affordable dwelling units will have a breakdown of 13 two-bedrooms and eight one-bedrooms. Which affordable dwelling units shall be located within the 38-unit building and the 12-unit building? Condition number three, the 165 dwelling units shall have a bedroom breakdown of 100 two-bedroom units, 60.61% of the total, which is less than 62% we discussed, and 65 one-bedroom units, 39.31% of the total. Condition number four, the deed restriction for affordability of the 21 dwelling units shall have a term of 40 years. And condition number five, unit 7C shall not be bound by Section 4.2.15, small c in per n, two in per n, small b in per n, Roman numeral four in per n, of the zoning regulations in order to permit vinyl clapboard siding as an acceptable exterior building material above 36 inches, period. I should probably say above 36 inches from the ground. Alan, is that acceptable? So that would be, that would be what we would propose.
Excuse me, commissioners. The applicant's presenting. Sorry.
So those are the conditions. If you have any questions that we proposed, and we hope you find them to be acceptable, if you have any questions of us, we would be pleased to, to answer those at this point. But we really don't have anything else to add to our presentation. Again, as this is a continuation of a very thorough presentation that was done back on, I think it's May 10th, at the last public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, Howard, did you have something else?
Mr. Rappaport would like to add one thing for the record.
Thank you for your time, and I'll keep this very brief. From our perspective, I hope you will see that from, from where we started, I believe in a very positive way, that our application has evolved. It'll be to your determination to determine whether it's acceptable or not. But from, from where we started, not just on affordable housing, because we started with no affordable housing, and then we were requested to think about having any affordable housing at 10%. But to where we are today, to the changes on the sustainability, on the walkability, I think this is a much better, more thoughtful proposed plan than where we started. And with your help, I think we've gotten to a place with meaningful changes that hopefully merits your serious consideration. Appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Lai.
Thank you. I don't have any really further comments. I did give you a memo that kind of broke down what we've discussed tonight. I guess I just want to put my one comment on the record. You know, as the commission is aware, that we currently are exempt from any CGS 830G affordable housing applications as a result of the four-year affordable housing moratorium that we have in effect, and that goes in effect until October of 2024. I just want to remind you that we achieved this status by incrementally putting affordable housing units around our town, not by having them concentrated in any one area. And I think this project goes a long way to providing some needed family affordable units, which we have very few of in town. So I appreciate the applicant's efforts to meet some of our goals, and I think, as indicated, it's a better project for it, so I support the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only comment I have is the access way that Mr. Cassidy spoke about. She described as emergency access. We would, and we talked about this among the police and other town staff, request that be full access. So there's two ways in and out of this development, as there is with the Tempo development.
Okay. Please.
Yes, so I talked to Michelle earlier about this, and I've also talked to...
Just for the record?
I'm sorry, Jim Cassidy, Halcye Pearson and Cassidy Engineering Services. I talked to Michelle earlier about this, and I also talked to Howard Rappaport from Continental Developments. We are agreeable to making that into a secondary access rather than just an emergency access. And we'll, again, we'll work out the final details with staff at the site plan level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doolittle, okay. At this time, we already read, read letters into the record, and your goal is to have those accepted for this application also, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if they'd just be included in the record, that would be satisfactory for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn to members of the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. We'll turn to commissioners, Commissioner Carey.
I just have one question. For this building that's four stories tall, how far is that from the, that 75-foot buffer zone?
I'm not sure which buffer zone you're talking about, from the property line or from...
The property line works, yeah.
So exact numbers I couldn't give you. You're probably a few hundred feet. It's on the other side of a pretty significant detention basin.
It's on the other side of a pretty significant detention basin from that property line, so it's a few hundred feet away. Is it possible to pop that drawing back up?
Commissioner Carey, Robin Pearson. You know, the other thing is, that might be an issue that we could explore in more depth at the site plan level. We're happy to pull down the screen right now and see if we can figure it out for you, but we can certainly address placement of building at the site plan level.
And this is the general plan level?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter?
No questions.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. The nature walk seemed like it was only accessible from near to the entrance to the development. So, Mr. Cassidy, maybe you could confirm that? And, and I'm wondering if it's possible for the residents who are further back in the development to have other access points to the nature walk?
So if we're-
Maybe if you flash that picture up again.
So, are you referring to like these unit?
Well, I'm just, maybe you could tell me, where would the residents be able to get access to the nature walk? I mean, I know there's some pretty steep terrain there, but where would they be able to?
So, there, there is a, a point just unfortunately underneath this picture where there's an access point to the nature walk.
Show me again.
This is all detention basin here, so you're not going to access here. As we come off the south side of the detention basin and we wrap around to this parking area, this is level. So we can provide an access point at the end of this, this parking area to get into that nature walk, in addition to, as I mentioned, the sidewalk that we have on the east side of the clubhouse. That was the purpose, to make another access point to the nature walk then along the back of these units. I'm not going to be able to get anything on the west side of these buildings. Again, there's a very large stormwater feature, it's detention basin in this area. So I could potentially have up to probably three access points, the nature walk, the existing one, an additional one down at the west end of this project where this park lot is here, and again, the one we're proposing on the, this area that comes in front of the clubhouse.
Okay, that's great. I really appreciate that. You could probably show more detail on the site plan.
Yeah, again, this is, you know, general planning.
I appreciate all the things that you've listed for energy issues. I noticed the EV charging had a star related to Eversource having the electricity. Our zoning regulations, I don't know if they give you an out there, but definitely give that the priority.
Sure.
The other thing is that there have been recent changes to the state's regulations and to grants in regard to what's called, well, called community solar. I don't think that's the word that are used in the regulations, but I would hope that you would consult with some solar experts who are familiar with the current regulations and see if it is impossible to put solar on all these buildings, to use the electricity, the revenue from that solar to benefit the residents, and, and do it at no net capital cost to your project. I'm not sure that's possible, but while you're developing the site plan, I hope you would look into using more solar in ways that benefit the residents throughout the project.
Again, we, you know, we've done solar in the past, and that's why we have a little caveat there, it says if possible or practical, once we get into the final site design and building design, then we can take a better look at it.
No, I'm really talking about, you've got solar for the common areas and, and the clubhouse, but I'm talking about actually providing revenue to the residents that shows up on their electric bill and obviously makes it more affordable for them to live there. I know that maybe the affordable housing regulations are not quite ready for this, but anything you can do in that area, I, I would be very reluctant to require it because I know there's a lot of contingencies and other things that could get in the way, but I would hope you would look into that more thoroughly-
Sure.
-and see if you can't provide solar in a way that benefits the residents.
Yep, so again, the site plan level is something we'll have to dive into.
Yeah, when you do the site plan, obviously. Thank you. Oh, also, energy storage can make your facility more resilient to power failures and also be done in such a way to improve the operating costs, which would help hold your rents down. So just like you to kind of review your energy picture again in light of, I mean, legislation that just passed this year, so, and, and pure regulations that were just adopted on January 1st. So if you could, you know, when you're developing your site plan, take a second look at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Foley?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Cavignaro?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Bernstein?
A few questions. Attorney Pearson, you may be the best positioned to answer. So on the approval conditions, I, I hate myself for asking this, but shouldn't the condition of number four be 40 years?
Yes, we do, we did change it to 40 years.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And this was probably discussed at the previous hearing on this, but the two-thirds, one-third breakout of two-bedroom to one-bedroom, what's the rationale behind that configuration?
If it was discussed at the last hearing, I was not here, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Rappaport. Thank you.
I would want to, and I will, I'm happy to check the math. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to follow the same 61.7%, 30, roughly 37% breakdown and have it be proportional. That's where it comes from. If I have a minute, I can check the math on that, but I think that's where the 13 and eight comes from. So we're trying to make it proportional to the overall number of one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms so that the, that the affordables have the same proportion.
I, I kind of sort of understood.
Okay, well, let me start again.
I, I guess really what I'm asking is-
We, we took 21 units-
Okay.
-which, which is our proposal. And we recognize in the entire development, we have 61.69% two-bedrooms. So we took 21, we multiplied that by 61.69%, and I, I believe that's how we came up with 13.
Okay, so it's not based on looking at data and seeing that this-
No, it's not based on that.
Oh, okay.
It's based on the math, and, and staff and I had some conversation about that as well.
All right, just curious, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I don't really have any additional questions as far as this application. Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, I had one more question I neglected to ask. Will you be doing this project in phases? And if so, should we modify these conditions that the ratios of affordable housing be maintained as we, as the phases are developed?
We will not be building the project in phases. It'll all be built at one time. We build, we start a foundation every three months, basically, on the, when we do larger foundations, but we're not legally phasing this.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, any, anything else? Staff? Does the applicant have any reason to keep the public hearing open?
No, thank you very much. I think we're all set. We appreciate your time. I hope you can look favorably on the applications and we can start pouring foundations, or at least go to the next site plan phase. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the site plan, okay. Hearing, no objection. We'll close the public hearing at 9:35 PM and we'll move on to our next application, which is Skene Properties, Application 22-17P. Do I catch my thoughts? Isn't that lightning, Ben?
Got it this time.
I had a little issue earlier, so.
For your record, I'm Peter Demali. Is this good?
Yeah. You could not waste quite so much, Peter. You kind of come in and out a little when you're moving back.
Okay, I'll try not to do too much of that.
Thank you.
Stationary. Again, Peter Demali of Design Professionals, President of the Company, Principal, offices at 21 Jeffrey Drive here in South Windsor. And I'm here on behalf of Skene Properties 644 LLC, and Daniel Madrigal, with whom you're familiar, everyone on the Commission, he is right in the second row, in the end seat. He's come in from Minneapolis, where he represents Skene out of that office, and he's been here for a number of developments in South Windsor. Also, Nancy DeMay is here. Nancy's in the back. She's part of the Woodcock family. They own the property. They're, they have agreed to sell it to Skene Properties. Members of the Woodcock family, and so she's here, and she was also in attendance at the Inland Wetlands Agency hearings, along with Daniel. So our project team is the same as last time. Louis Vanderluke from GMA Architects, their St. Louis office, he came in. Attorney Tom Cody of Robinson &amp; Co. in Hartford. Benjamin Wheeler, who's just up here, our Director of Operations in Landscape Architecture Design Professionals. Daniel Jamison, Design Professionals Project Manager and Civil Engineer for the development. And a little change is Matt Gustafson is here, who's Dean Gustafson's son, who's filling in for him. He's a little under the weather, out of All Points Technology in Waterford, wonderful firm. And also Chris McLean is here from Langin in New Haven, who are our traffic, he was our traffic engineer. Of course, we have two applications pending before you, re-subdivision of site plans, so I'm only addressing this hearing, the re-subdivision. And these, of course, are two continued hearings from June 14th. And as stated previously, the only reason for this re-subdivision application is a change to the Kennedy Road right-of-way for the design of the cul-de-sac and related improvements including drainage associated with the cul-de-sac. I'm not going to go through the history we went through last time. As you recall, Skene Properties has agreed to build the new cul-de-sac at the request of town staff, which is associated with some drainage and land associated with that, but it's not a requirement for our development. We are also willing to donate, there was a discussion last time, to the town 68 Kennedy Road, which is on the east side of Kennedy Road, north of the development there, up, mostly upland, heavily wooded site, and also the 10-foot strip along the railroad, railroad line in the back, directly contiguous to that. We're willing to do that. All of that will be part of a four-acre conservation easement proposed and was approved by the Inland Wetlands Agency recently unanimously. The applicant, we've, oh, we've redesigned the, at the request of town engineer, we've redesigned the Kennedy Road cul-de-sac, and I think staff were, I mean, the Commission was also referencing that, to provide a 10-foot snow shelf all around the circumference. So we've redesigned that, and then it leads into the detention basin beyond that that we proposed. And the land, land for 68 Kennedy Road, town engineer recommended that the detention basin not be an easement over 68 Kennedy Road. It was proposed to be owned by Skene, acquired from Woodcock family, just like the other three, three other parcels. So town engineer recommended that that not be an easement for the detention basin, but be deeded to the town, but if you agree, and we're amenable to that, if you agree to, to accept 68 Kennedy Road, the whole parcel becomes town, beautiful open space, including the detention basin. So there'd be no issues associated with ongoing rights, and the town would have it. And you'd have everything on the east side of the right-of-way. There's another, I think, 450 feet of right-of-way that's not proposed to be developed. Goes up to the north toward the railroad crossing. We have looked at two memos, recent memos from Mr. Doolittle and also the memo from Michelle Leip. Both, I think, were dated in early June. And with respect to Mr. Doolittle's comments, we agree to comply with all of his comments. We just take exception to one of his comments, which was number one in the re-subdivision. We respectfully disagree that, that it should be our position to rebuild Kennedy Road. We offered to do the cul-de-sac, it's the only reason we're here. We wouldn't have applied otherwise, but we respectfully disagree with that request, requirement for us to rebuild Kennedy Road. The applicant, our proposal has nothing to do with the road's current condition and lack of maintenance by the town. It's been built 57 years ago. The, the town didn't make it a priority, and I can understand why they didn't. They didn't put it in their budget, they didn't put in their capital projects, they didn't bond it, they didn't do anything with it. And there's, and I won't go into the details on that, but the property to the east of us, a much bigger facility, was not asked to do the reconstruction of the street. We were asked to do the cul-de-sac, we agreed to do that, and the storm drainage system. So that's a town responsibility. We respectfully disagree with that, but we understand that this Commission may very well make it a condition, and we understand that. And that's it with respect to the re-subdivision, anything new?
Okay.
And all our, every, our whole team's here, so available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. I just did want to indicate that I did speak with Mike Maniscalco, the town manager, regarding the applicant's offer of the donation of the land to the town. As indicated, I had some concerns with the re-subdivision based on the 10-foot strip as well as the configuration of the lot. And the manager indicated that would be something the town would be interested in accepting. So we'd recommend that the Commission accept the land being offered as becoming town-owned land. That reserves access to the rail if ever we ever need it in the future. So that's one of the reasons I think I'm in favor of us doing that as well. The only other thing I would note is this, we did recommend that a walkway or a sidewalk be put along the Sullivan Ave frontage that's not reflected on the plan in front of you
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to echo Peter's, or piggyback on his comments, Kennedy Road does need to be reconstructed. It is in poor shape. I just wanted to put that on the record. With regard to the cul-de-sac, two things. One, they did provide truck turning templates. They're a little hard to read, so I'd ask that those be clarified. And I'd ask that they work with us to simplify the grading on the cul-de-sac. They did add the ten-foot snow shelf, which I appreciate. But the cul-de-sac is shown with three low points, which is a lot for a cul-de-sac. So I think we can simplify the grading to make it easier to construct and easier to maintain going forward.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. At this point, we'll turn to the public. Are there any letters to read into the record, or? No? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against? Or have questions or concerns regarding the re-subdivision? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to Commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein. Commissioner Cavignaro.
On the re-subdivision, I have no comments.
Commissioner Foley.
Nothing.
Commissioner Wagner.
I have no comments, but I would note that I did listen to the recording, the video recording of the previous hearing, so I'm completely familiar with what's been happening here.
Okay, Commissioner Dexter.
No comment.
Commissioner Carey.
No comments.
I just have a concern. Michelle, you said that the plans before us today do not have the sidewalk on Sullivan, correct?
That's correct.
And that's something I don't believe we need to address with the re-subdivision, correct?
It's up to you. I mean, your subdivision regulations have sidewalks in it when you're adding frontages that are on existing roads. The applicant, I think in the site plan application, you'll find that they re-graded the frontage, however, they didn't add the sidewalk, but it's re-graded for a potential sidewalk.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. DiMali, could you come to the microphone?
Sure.
You heard the concerns of the Commission last meeting, and yet we still don't see a sidewalk on Sullivan Avenue.
Right, and we decided to take a look at the whole body of it. If you choose to, and I'm not sure whether you do it during the site plan or during the subdivision, I would think during the site plan, but if you choose to put a condition on that, we're going to step back and look at all your conditions and see how we can proceed. If you choose to, it's completely up to you. There is grading available, the existing conditions, actually for the grades along within the right-of-way on Sullivan Avenue accommodate either ten-foot or five-foot sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, or ten-foot, two minutes concrete pathway, like we did, I think about two thousand linear feet in front of Mobus, Skanel did, my client, in front of Mobus and in front of Vistaar. So if you decide to put that as a condition, then you do. We're going to have to look at everything, the whole body of it, and see how to proceed.
Okay.
I would just note, they were required at the subdivision stage, the Skanel sidewalks at the end of Sullivan Ave.
Yeah, we created three lots at that time. We're not creating any lots now.
I'm pretty sure that'll be a condition of the subdivision, so, okay. Is, everybody's all set for this? Commissioner Wagner?
I guess I'd like to say, I think I read a concern from a court hearing that it's difficult to require under subdivision regulations to require sidewalks, so we might want to phrase it that if, that it be a sidewalk on the property of the applicant, or at their option, put the sidewalk on town property.
Yeah, I believe that would be on state property where it becomes an issue, but if the sidewalk is actually on the... Not in the state right-of-way, it doesn't become an issue, I don't believe.
I mean, they could put the sidewalk on their property, or on the state property, if they can get approval, to put it on the state property.
If you do that, if you make a condition of approval that you want it on, on the state property, it won't affect our layout. But if you do it on our property, it will affect the grading, which is a birmingham effect we have. It'll have an effect on that. Birming's might be a little bit lower, that type of thing.
Well, I think we would probably just put that there needs to be a sidewalk or a multi... ten-foot multi-use path. Okay.
We still have a lot of landscaping and stuff to dress up the front anyways.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff Doolittle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend the, as regard to the sidewalk, that it be a five-foot sidewalk, not a ten-foot multi-use path.
Okay. Thank you for that recommendation. Commissioners, any reason to keep the public hearing open on the re-subdivision? Hearing and seeing none, staff, applicant, any final words?
Oh, that's it, thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the hearing for the re-subdivision at nine fifty-one PM, and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is Skanel Properties' application number two for the request for the site plan approval.
Again, for the record, Peter DiMali, President of Design Professionals Incorporated, offices at twenty-one Jeffrey Drive. And I'm not going to reiterate who our design team is here, we just went through that prior application. It's okay with you, we won't do that. So we'll start just getting into the site plan application, if I may. Incidentally, you should have eleven-by-seventeen handouts, which has the exhibits that we have with, as you're holding up, Mr. Pascones. Yes, the, so you'll have that, and then behind that are a bunch of architectural illustrations that Louis Vanderluke will be discussing, our architect for the project, with respect to screening of rooftop units. He did analysis and he has some recommendations for your consideration. So again, this is a, application is for a warehouse and distribution center and not a trucking or freight terminal. As you know, Skanel has done five developments already to date in this town. This would be the sixth. And if you were so to choose to approve this development, it'll bring up to one point five million square feet of industrial space that Skanel has provided in this community with national tenants. I'm not going to go through the site plan aspects because Mr. Wagner reviewed everything, as I understand it, in terms of the details and how many loading docks and square foot and all, I'll dispense with that. Unless someone has a question about that, I can review that if you'd like. We have submitted revised cul-de-sac plans, including most of the recommendations, although we heard something new tonight from the town engineer and from the Commission. And as I mentioned in the last hearing, it has a ten-foot snow shelf, and that's for the public cul-de-sac. With respect to drive-in doors, there's a question last time, on the drive-in doors, there's one at the northerly end of the truck court and one at the southerly end, so you can have a ramp go up in. The purposes of that is for trash vehicles to go in, and also for maintenance vehicles, and also for occasional forklifts may go in and out of the building. And those will both be two-way. So they'll be infrequently used, but they, they like to provide them, Skanel likes to provide them at each end of the loading dock court, which has twenty-five loading docks, although we can have an additional twenty. The building's designed to maybe get up to twenty if a tenant needs it. Let's see. And incidentally, with respect to the ramp going up, so those are maintenance vehicles you can go up and in. So it's, it's high inside, the racking systems and other, other features inside internally. And they are high, so sometimes you get maintenance trucks and others with booms on them and stuff like that to be able to get high. So the trucks can drive right in, do the maintenance, and they get out. So that's, that's another reason for the drive-in doors. Matt, Dean Gustafson reviewed, I think in depth last time, about our conservation areas and all that stuff on the site. I don't think there's a need to revisit that. However, his son, Matt Gustafson, is here from the same firm, All Points Technology, and he's available if you should have any further questions or like to be enlightened further. We have requested site lighting height waiver. I won't get into the details of that, we reviewed it last time. We already just discussed about the sidewalks, I won't go into that any longer. And, oh, also out front, there's a request, I believe it was by Chairman Pascones, have we looked at a sidewalk to... From the building, are sidewalks associated with the buildings, pedestrian access to the buildings on the south and east sides? Are we going to connect that to a sidewalk along Sullivan Avenue? If, whether it's required by this Commission at this time, or a future sidewalk, the answer is yes, or revised plans to reveal a sidewalk, a concrete sidewalk, from Sullivan Avenue frontage up to the existing, the previously proposed sidewalks around the building. And that will be built to ADA compliance in terms of grades and design. And it will be built, whether or not you require a sidewalk to be built to breadth of our frontage on Sullivan Avenue. So it's a given. With respect to engineering design, our one remaining surface basin along the west side of the property has been moved to the west to provide a new ten-feet-wide snow shelf, westerly of the trailer spaces. So that's a tire west, that's between the detention basin and the trailer court, we have a ten-foot, ten-feet-wide snow shelf. And as Ben described on June fourteenth at the last hearing, as Ben Wheeler did, we still have substantial snow storage areas on the inside of the building. I won't get into detail about that, but we're providing storage for substantial snow coverage in the winter. And we also are adding to it with the additional snow shelf on the westerly end of our trailer court. Daniel has redesigned the southerly parking lot driveway to comply with grading requirements. That's of the three... Pardon me, the, the two access points in the middle of the building, and then there's another one southeast corner. That's, that one at the southeast corner, redesigned that after comments from Mr. Doolittle. So we have redesigned that, so it'll be compliant with the grading requirements. And our revised plans indicate that. Covered that. And we have submitted three response letters, which you should have before you, and probably in advance of the hearing. Mr. Doolittle had two, two sets of comments, one for the re-subdivision, which we addressed the prior hearing, and then also another one for the site plan, and Michelle had one also, a set of comments. And we have responded to those, and you should have our responses as part of the record. Many of them are minor. I'm not going to get into those unless you want to. So suffice it to say, we've responded to all those, and we have no objections. We are also providing an access easement for property to the west of us, to allow for connection opposite Schwire Road for them if they choose to have access point out Sullivan Avenue beyond what they have, or if the Commission requires it in subsequent action on, for an application for them. So we have it schematically, you asked us to do that, so we have provided that in the package. As requested, truck movements have been added to the plans. And we also have removed the exit drive, westbound exit drive on Sullivan Avenue from the truck court, as recommended by the town engineer. Oh, he actually recommends some modifications. We're, we're, we think that we couldn't get that approved by OSA, and we're totally doing away with that exit. As a consequence, we've replaced it with a large private cul-de-sac, and also twenty-feet-wide emergency vehicle access drive out to Sullivan Avenue, which is consistent with the direction provided by town staff, including Walt Summers, a fire marshal. And I understand you may, I don't know if you had a meeting with town staff? So I gather, Michelle will, Director of Planning will report on that to you in her comments tonight. We've also, we've covered that, excuse me, skip over that. We have, Mr. Wheeler, the landscape architect for the project, has redesigned the landscape architectural component to meet the recommendation of the Plains Only Commission's Advisory Architectural Design Review Committee, which was to enhance the street view of the building southeast corner by shortening the height of trees. So he's backed that out, so it'll be shorter trees, you'll see more of the southeast corner, as the ADRC recommended, and I think that was consensus. It's a nice-looking corner. Why hide it with trees? Let's try to open that up a little bit, so he has revised the plan accordingly. We have also, there is some interest in having a landscape area separating, in the event we ever had to do the reserved parking, which we think we won't, but if we had to do reserved parking, we were requested to add a five-feet-wide landscape, or landscape island. We should depict a five-feet-wide landscape island between the truck court and the reserved parking spaces to meet the concern expressed last hearing with regard to safety for the people who would be parking there. And before I get to, actually, I think that is it, other than just a brief summary. But I'd like to turn it over to Louis Vanderluke, who is with GMA, and he would like to review his analysis with respect to the rooftop units. Can they be seen from Sullivan Avenue, eastbound or westbound, near the site, or from a distance? And he's done analysis and he has some recommendations, and it's part of your package, it's eleven-by-seventeen. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Louis Vanderluke with GMA Architects, Architect on the Project. I'm going to kind of walk you guys through the analysis I have, and then before I get completely through that, propose the screening that we're proposing for the units. When I run these analyses, I tend to be conservative with what I do. So what you're seeing on, on screen or the first page of the isometric, is you're seeing five rooftop units dropped on closest to Sullivan Road. Because as I get farther back onto the building, they're less visible from the public way. So I keep everything to the front side. I stagger them like I stagger them, so that you have a good idea. So I may be able to see the one in the back, but not the one in the front, or vice versa. The locations I'm showing, I have, to be honest, I have no idea if they're right or not, you know, at some point, because I don't have a tenant there in order to tell me where I'm going to be at. What we also did, because we did the Vistaar and the Mobus project, I went back to those two buildings and say, what do we have on those two buildings? This is appropriate for that size. The five units you're seeing on the roof right now are approximately twelve-foot wide by thirty-five-foot long by eight-foot tall. Those are the units that are in the very front of the Vistaar building over the office. In these kind of buildings, the office tends to have the larger units, because that's where all the people are. Most of these are unconditioned warehouses, limited condition warehouses. If you look at an arrow, and I can point it out here in a minute, what's on the main warehouse base, usually exhaust fans, smaller makeup air units, not necessarily conditioning with compressors and larger fans and whatnot. Again, being conservative, I used the largest units we had on those buildings and placed them everywhere. So I figure if I can see those, then it's something we have to address, not knowing where they would be in the future. What you're seeing down below is the, the line of sight, and I took it from all the way to the railroad crossing, which is the farthest back, I think you would probably see the building, and shot it, because I was trying to verify to myself that a line of sight from that location matched the images I was getting as I was moving through, moving through the model. So the next page is what we would propose for a screening application. We use these quite extensively on, on these type of buildings, because we don't know where they're going to be. We don't know, are they big, are they small, what are they, can I actually see them? So these screens that we're proposing, they're unit-mounted screens. So what happens is, is when the rooftop unit is set, a screen is attached to that, pre-manufactured, made specifically for that unit. I have multiple options, whether it be a, a flat panel, a louver panel, I can do a three-sided. So if I have three sides, I can see it from, but not the fourth, I can leave it open. I'll be honest, they're not the cheapest thing in the world, for a couple of reasons. A, they're expensive structurally, because we had to upgrade the structure of the unit itself to carry that screen. And depending on the final screen we'd end up buying, they can be time-consuming if I have to get into the unit for regular maintenance, because I have to take the panels off and put the panels back on when they come on. So from both a cost and a maintenance standpoint, they're not the best from, from there. But we use them a lot, because they're, they meet the requirements, they meet the needs, and I can get them in different colors, different patterns, different styles, different sizes, more customized to the actual unit. The next third page you're seeing is pictures, just as opposed to just an isometric, it's, it's examples of what, of what we've used and seen. The units that are have here, the one at the top is probably larger than what we would have, that's actually three units altogether, but I thought it was a nice... That's actually three units altogether, but I thought it was a nice, a nice image for at least showing the size and scale of what these could be. The one to lower right is more applicable to what our unit size would actually be. And the one to lower left is an example of what I can do, if I can see it, if I'm low enough on the roof, I only need to screen it really from two sides, it can still be done and not do a full block of the screen from, from Sullivan Avenue. So the next page here is kind of an aerial photograph showing Kennedy, showing, showing our building, showing FedEx, showing the five locations I shot the views from. And then Mobius and Vista for a point of reference. The unit I'm talking about that I sized it from is the one right here in the upper-right corner of Vista, because that's the one where the office unit was. What I did then is I took our grading plan, I dropped our building into it, I, I put a quick model together to look at it with those units on top, and then I went down and came down Google Earth and, and spotted along the road, the spot elevations of what Google Earth is telling me. I compared those elevations for what I got at certain points across the grades I have for our property for existing, for what I was getting with Google, and I was within a foot. What we found is with Google Earth, if I'm, if I'm on a paved surface, I don't have a lot of trees around, it's fairly accurate for this kind of thing. So I went through, and I went to each of these viewpoints, I set the viewpoints up, so I had a spot next to an existing curb cut on either one side or the other of Sullivan, so that I knew where I was in space when I kind of pulled the Google image Earth together. I was trying to give myself reference points as I went through. So flipping then through the views, this is the shot of where View A would be, just the regular Google Earth view. There's no building superimposed on this. It's really just a, trying to get at myself of what I would actually see through the trees, with the poles, with all the, the other buildings that are here. The building will be back up in here, right about where that tree line is. At that location, that's what the building would look like. And this is set six feet above the elevation that Google Earth told me. I believe this was, Google Earth said it was 82-feet elevation, so I set the I at 88-feet, and I looked to approximately 110-feet, which would be about halfway up on the building. The unit, those five red dots you're seeing on the building are the five units that you see on the very first isometric that was there. So that's representing. The reason the red, I wouldn't, we wouldn't do them red in real life. We'd do them a color to match the building. I do them red here, so I can see them. So I can make them stand out. You know, what we would do here is we'd make a color with that screening, the, the metal screening we're proposing, to blend in with the building, either a gray, the light gray, the dark gray, one of the colors, it would kind of disappear. As I step myself down to location B, which is probably about halfway down towards the property, I think you see the house that we talked about last time right here. That's what you would see at that point, is you can see the, the screening of that unit, you're really only seeing the very last one. And keeping in mind that units in the back of the building are usually half as long, eight-foot wide instead of 12, usually half as high, maybe five-feet with the curb instead of eight-feet with the curb. So again, this is a worst-case scenario that you would see. Stepping through then to the location C, which was almost directly at the end of the building, you see nothing, obviously, because you're so far down below grade. And I intentionally left the grading out and didn't put the landscaping in here, so we could see just the building purely as it was. Looking at location D, you can see there's the FedEx sign. The building would be sitting right here at this location. At this location, this is what work you'd see of the building, and the only spot you would see would be that very last bit of screening right above the roof at this location there. And then the last location is the very end of FedEx property. Again, at that point, you're far enough away with a color-blended screening of the, of either the light gray or the medium gray, it disappears against the sky. I mean, I'm more than happy to run them with a color match it to see what it looks like, but it, they tend to, the farther you get back, if they're color-matched, they disappear. And that's one of the other things like about the screening we're proposing, is I can get a color match. Rooftop units, I hate to say it, really only come in one or two colors with that screening. I have a wide range of colors. I can get to really dial it in, you know, 20, 25, 30 colors. And then with the, the corrugation, if we do a louver pattern on the screen, it also gives me opportunity to get a little shadow light in and to break the panel up. And that's the exhibits I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderlue. So that, that concludes our, our presentation tonight. I'll just summarize, we've done a number of requested modifications to the plan. We think we're, we're in compliance with what people were asking for. We have the loading docks on the far side of Kennedy Road. We have lots of landscaping in the front, along Kennedy Road and also along Sullivan Avenue. We've done a substantial area, conservation area to the north side. We've done a lot of water quality treatments and storm drainage modifications. We think we're ready to go, and it's up for the, to the commission as to just what you want to require in terms of conditions. So I think that's, oh. One more thing I had. Oh, yeah, the reserve parking on the north drive, access drive for trucks off the town cul-de-sac, we had reserve parking there. Those have all been removed and replaced with the reserve parking to the east of the detention basin, as we discussed earlier. So that also was a modification. I think we've pretty much covered all the other modifications. There's some minor ones that are addressed in the, in the written correspondence we've had with the town staff and to the commission.
Okay. That conclude your presentation?
That's it.
Okay.
We tried to be quick.
We'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, the show.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to report that we did take a look at it, staff, the cul-de-sac design, eliminating the turn out of the road, and both police and fire are satisfied with the proposal of a 20-foot emergency entrance. We have something similar on Troy Road to get into FedEx, so it's being designed similar to that, so. And all the other concerns that I had, have been addressed with these revised plans. I just would note that the zoning data table will need to be reflected if the, subtracting out the land that the town will be taking. So there's a couple minor changes to the plan as a result of some of the decisions that you'll be making that we'll be looking for in final plans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Turn to our town engineer, just Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Peter said, they've said they would address all of my comments, just to reiterate the things that are outstanding at this point is, one, to double-check the existing culvert that goes into the railroad tracks that they're proposing to drain to, make sure that's in good condition, and they have the rights to drain to it. There's some modifications to the drainage system that are relatively minor, that I believe still need to be made. WPCA review and approval is needed. They did provide an estimate of average flows. I would hope they would update that as they get to WPCA, and also provide peak sewer flows that they expect to come from this facility. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn to members of the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward, gentleman in the blue shirt.
Good evening, folks. It's quite late, so I'm going to shrink three minutes of testimony into, into just one minute. It's John Hollazak, Cody Circle, 30-year town resident. I was reviewing the traffic study for this application, and I noticed something that kind of stood out. The Institute for Traffic Engineers code that was used was Code 150, which is sort of a general warehouse. ITE goes on to explain that it's, it's typically a storage-type warehouse. And you have a situation here where the tenant is not named, so you don't know really how intense warehouse use it's going to be. To give you an example, a, a distribution, or, I'm sorry, fulfillment center would be a Code 155. That tends to generate a lot more trips, both trucks and, and traffic, or car traffic. And what really stood out to me was the, the last applicant that appeared before you that was proposing to build a warehouse and not naming a tenant. This was also represented from a traffic engineering sense by Langdon Engineering, and they chose Code 156, which is a high cube parcel hub-type warehouse, which is the most intense in terms of trip generation. So there's a couple of questions there you can ask, or not, given the lateness of the hour, but what it boils down to is, would this applicant, or would you consider asking the applicant to sign a legal affidavit that they would not use this warehouse as a high cube parcel hub, or as a fulfillment center? Because, you know, they're, they're shortchanging you on the amount of traffic it's going to generate, and potentially shortchanging the state of Connecticut if they claim a Code 150 and actually use it for a Code 156 or 155 type of use. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns they'd like addressed? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to commissioners. Commissioner Carey.
I've got confused about this road onto Sullivan. Is this only for emergency use?
Could you speak up a little?
I'm sorry. This road on to Sullivan?
Much better, thank you.
I'll get there one of these days. Is this only emergency use?
Yes, it's proposed for only emergency access.
So no trucks can go in or out of it?
Correct. It'll be gated, correct.
Okay, okay. And then, um...
If I can make one other comment to your comment at the last hearing about the view shed into that area there, with this redesign, that'll eliminate some of that view, because you don't have as much wide-open area there. So this redesign will help hide some of the activity in that back area.
Okay. And then, this is kind of interesting, this public comment about the traffic study. So I'd be interested to know, why did you use that traffic study?
Chris McLean will address that. He's the traffic engineer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christopher McLean, from Langdon Engineering, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm the one that developed, we developed the traffic study. So land use Code 150 is a, is a warehouse, and land use Code 156 is a high cube parcel hub warehouse. These two, these two facilities are designed and inherently different. And to be clear, the, the proposal, the building you have in front of you has been designed as a warehouse. A parcel hub is a little different, where the, the building size, shape, the layout within it is different than what a parcel hub would be. The loading dock doors are, are in a different orientation, they're different sizes and different heights. High cube has a higher loading dock door than what has been designed here, and that these, this facility, it has not been designed in that way. So when we use the land use Code 150, we used it because the, the, the information that's available in the ITE trip generation manual is based on, you know, these historic warehouses that have been designed in the same way that this facility's been designed. So a parcel hub is not the same as the type of facility that you see in front of you. Hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
I want some clarification about Kennedy Road, because I know what the applicant has said, and I know what the town has said, but I don't know where we stand. Can, can we understand what's happening to Kennedy Road?
Kennedy, well, we're, we're, the only proposal we had in our design is to have to build, at the request of town staff, in earlier discussions, they said, will you, would you consider building the missing cul-de-sac that was never erected by the town 57 years ago, or thereabouts? And our client, Daniel Magical, said, yeah, we'll agree to do that. So we had that, plus the drainage associated therewith, which is the detention basin, and also we have to move some telephone poles or whatever, lighting and stuff like that. So he agreed to do that at our, at this project's expense. We were not discussing with them reconstructing the whole street that's 57 years old, or inspect and repair or replace the storm drainage system. That was not what we originally talked about, and, and we, we do not see that we're causing that. The condition exists today. The town didn't maintain it adequately over 57 years. It's in a deteriorate. We're, we're not disputing that it doesn't need work. It's in a condition today, based on the town didn't make it a priority. So I don't even know if it was ever resurfaced during the 57 years. I don't think so. It was not reconstructed, we know that. They didn't do the cul-de-sac. And we, we also, last time, we indicated, you know, the bigger development to the east side of the other side of Kennedy Road was not requested to do the cul-de-sac, nor reconstruct it, nor the storm drainage. And we, we're also getting hit with the, we know we're going to have to do the traffic signal, which is a, a big nut as well. Looks like it's around 450,000, give or take 100,000, $200,000. So we're doing that as well. So we recognize that the commission may choose to have us do that, impose that on this development. We're just saying, our position is that we had nothing to do with that. We are, we will be using the roadway once our project is developed, but we're not the cause of it, the lack of maintenance, and then over time, roads just need to be redone and drainage systems. We're doing it all over town. We, we prioritize. We never did a bond issue. We never put in the budget. We never made a priority on our capital improvements projects. As we always do, we look at those and they become priorities. So it's...
So it's, it's still kind of in a stalemate, we're waiting for what this commission may put as a condition of approval? And Jeff, you want to chime in?
Right. So, so we haven't come to an agreement with the developer about how Kennedy Road is going to get done. Obviously, the developers looked at it, the town is looking at it, neither one of us have a final solution.
Okay.
I think we both agree it needs to be done.
I agree, I agree. And the traffic signal?
That's a decision of the Office of State Traffic Administration. Mr. McLean from Langdon will go through that process on behalf of the project, assuming it proceeds. And, and we have every expectation, because his traffic study indicates that the need is there today without our project. It will be required as part of the OSA permit, and Lieutenant Bonaduce, representing the traffic authorities for the town, representing Chief Christian Lindstrom, he, he has indicated that he would like to see the traffic light as well. He's reviewed our report. So, and I think that's a consensus of staff, or, yeah, that's also, Michelle's indicating that's a consensus of the town staff, that the light should go, go in the signal. So barring something unusual happening, we have every expectation that the state OSA as part of our permit, because we're over 100,000 square feet, we will, we will have to incur the cost for that. Even though it serves everybody using Kennedy Road.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wag here.
You went through all the changes so fast, and I wasn't able to see them on the drawings, so I'm just hoping our other commissioners, who were actually here for the hearing, were able to understand that. I do have one question. Where, where is the reserve parking? I'm looking on these drawings, and I don't see it.
The reserve parking, it's dash lines. If you look at the west side of the trailer, of the loading docks, there's a trailer parking area. It would remove...
What drawing are we on?
Sheet two, sheet two. Yes, yes, it's also indicates sheet two on it.
Now, I see a lot of, it looked like trailer parking, but you're telling me that's reserved parking, or?
There is, on the, yeah, if you look at it carefully, you can indicate that there are the trailer spart, spaces, but also there's a five-foot strip where it's all white, there's a five-foot strip next to that, and then the parking spaces are, are abutting that five-foot strip, and then abutting the detention basin. Can you see that, the dash lines?
Maybe you could come and show me.
Ben, Mr. Wheeler's going to do that. And he'll also indicate to you the 10-foot strip that we provided for snow shelves.
For the record, Ben Wheeler, Design Professionals, so they're in the area of the trailer parking. The, the trailer parking is being proposed to be built as a part of this. If the reserve parking were needed in the future, that would replace the, the trailer parking that is proposed as part of, of this application.
So you'd have less trailer parking than is shown, but you would meet the need for the automobile parking?
Correct.
And where are the cabs, the tractors parking?
What was the question?
Where are the tractors of the tractor trailer?
There are any cabs there. They can go in, they either go offsite, or they can go in where trailers would go. They can have, they could have them tandem there. And there also are... There also are other spaces in front, on the west side of the building where they can go if they don't do the knockouts and don't do additional trailer parking.
All right, thanks, that's all I have.
Commissioner Foley.
Just, I'm going to go back to the rebuilding of the road. When, maybe Jeff or Michelle can help me, when Aldi's came to town on Rice Street, who paid to rebuild Rice Street?
So, Commissioner Foley, Rice Street was rebuilt by Aldi's, they hired a contractor to do that as part of their project, and I don't know for sure, but I believe it was worked into their abatement schedule somehow with the town, but they rebuilt it because we told them the road wouldn't support their trucks the way it was, similar to Kennedy Road.
Peter, has there been any collaborative effort between FedEx and your client to...
No.
I just don't, I don't think it's fair for to show the responsibility of the taxpayers to rebuild the road for...
FedEx doesn't have an application before you, so they have no responsibility.
I understand that, I feel terrible, 100%, but neither, there's no residents driving up and down that road.
No. Although, a couple of guys sometimes of late hang out at the end of the road, we've noticed, but...
Was that?
Yeah, they drink a few beers or something, but that's, that's all we've seen. It's a little quiet at the end.
I have nothing else.
That'll end.
Commissioner Cavignaro.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the driveway on the western side, but Commissioner Carey asked it already. I do have one concern, not necessarily with this project, but the area of Kennedy Road. What, and again, we, I'm not sure if we'll have an answer for this, but last week, I took a drive to Kennedy Road, I wanted to see it for myself, and one of the biggest or interesting things about it, comparing it to past warehouse projects, this one stuck out to me because there's a lot of trash on the western side. Compare it to the eastern side where FedEx is, there's some trash that isn't really picked up after, but on the western side of Kennedy Road, there's a lot. Honestly, looking at it, it's probably been at least a year or two since someone else has cleaned up after Kennedy Road and even trash in the road as well towards the end of, where the road ends. I'm just curious. I assume it's a yes, I really assume it's a yes, but I assume the western side of Kennedy Road, where of course the land will be for the project, it'll be maintained, trash will be picked up routinely, that's one of concerns I really noticed at this.
There's no question that they will maintain their property, it's going to be beautifully landscaped, it'll have lawns, it'll have shrubs, trees, they're going to spend a lot of money on this and there'll be somebody there to make sure it gets cleaned up. Right now, most of the traffic comes from a major facility on the road and, because it doesn't, you don't have the residential traffic up there and stuff like that, so that's where it's coming from. And, when there's somebody there and they have invested in their property and they want to make it look nice, as they will, because it's a multimillion dollar project, it'll be cleaned up, but there's nobody there now to do it. It's just woods, just all woods now.
Yeah, I just want it on the record, thank you. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Bernstein.
So, our local resident who posed a question about the traffic study actually had a part two, and I find this intriguing. So, essentially, if the traffic study was done based on a standard, in this case, the standard was this code 150, then the suggestion is there should be a commitment that there not be a tenant that would require the code 156, or maybe said another way, the traffic study should be redone using code 156 because it's a different application. And, I, you know, I look at this issue and it kind of brings back the whole warehouse versus, you know, truck terminal, but I can see his point and I think it's a good point.
Well, as Mr. McLean indicated, he'll come up here, he indicated that we are designed for a warehouse.
Right.
This is not physically designed for that other use code, so he'll address that. Right, right. And, one other thing, do you want to do that or you want me to do that?
Well, it's the same thing that happened with 240 Ellington Road, if you recall. When that was first approved, it was approved as a warehouse distribution on spec, and then when Amazon wanted to come in, they came in with a new traffic study, which was done under this code of 156. They changed the model of the building, put in the, you know, so it came in for a redesign and another approval under a different traffic...
Right, they reapply.
Study.
So, that would be done again if a tenant came in that was a different application than a quote warehouse? If it was a high queue parcel hub?
Yeah.
Or used that way?
It's a physically different building and it doesn't meet the definition for the warehouse that we're using, so, yeah, it would have to reapply.
The state would want to look at it again, too. I mean, it's a state approval that they got originally.
Got it.
Yeah. It's a, when you have an OESTA approval, it's a tight approval. Do you want to vary from that? You got to go back.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Let me, let me go through a couple of questions first. I know Commissioner Foley has something he'd like to touch on. Regarding the AC units above the office area, generally, the rooftop units are placed where they need to be. I see your office areas depicted as being in the, if you want to call it...
Corner, yeah.
What, northeast corner and southeast corner?
Yes.
So, I would expect that there would be rooftop units over that area. Would that be a fair assumption?
Yes, and he'll, Louis will address that.
Okay. So, you're proposing these covers to shield the units, correct?
Correct.
Is there a way for us or you to specify that they'll be so far away from the outside wall of the building? Michelle, is there? To keep the view of them, like, the way it's depicted right now, you've got that great entrance, and what you could have right above that is that gaudy-looking enclosure around the rooftop unit.
Usually with this style of office and grand...
Just for the record?
Louis Van Lee, with GMA. Thank you. The Vist, I used the Vista R1 because the Vista R office is probably larger than what we've been seeing in this size of building lately. I want to say the Vista R office was 12,000 or 13,000 square feet of office, usually these running about eight, eight to 10,000 is what we've been seeing. The rooftop unit that was there was probably a little bigger based on what it was also doing when you look at what else is going on in the building. The other thing is, we've also got it to where that front entry also stands up, so there's additional screening that would happen with that standing up, and usually that unit is set in to the first column line. So, it's naturally usually set back about 50 feet anyways. Most of these offices follow into the first or second column bay across the front of the building, and those units usually set to the back because that's where the biggest load would be. So, the front of the unit usually is in that 40 or 50 foot off the face of the building range.
Okay. And, maybe we need to firm up our regulations a little bit more to specify some of this, that it's so far away from the outside of the building. I know it's not in there now, but, okay, thank you. Traffic code 150 is covered, the Kennedy Road reconstruction. I really feel that, that road needs to be replaced, I know that's the consensus. This distribution center wants to come in. I believe that that's got to be a condition of approval, that they address that. That's about all I got on that per se. And I'll turn to Commissioner Foley.
Irrigation, Ben.
Yeah, we, Ben Wheeler for the record, we discussed that with our client and, you know, given the amount of other requests on this project and considering the other properties that are in the zone, in the industrial zone, that Skennell has developed and other properties have developed, the Mobus and Vista R buildings, you know, the landscaping in front of those buildings is, is doing well. The other properties where they did install irrigation down on the Ellington Road or in the I-291 corridor development zone, that, you know, that have a higher aesthetic standard than in the straight industrial zone. So, again, they're, they're looking back at their other buildings that they've developed just down the street on Sullivan Avenue without irrigation, that, you know, the plant material seems to be doing quite well and is established in front of those buildings.
I believe Hyundai Mobus and Vista R both are irrigated.
And I believe FedEx and Aldi are not, so other facilities that are not, again, where the landscaping is doing well. So...
Also, going to the video, you know, like, let's go to, let's just say Home Depot, right, and we see this video, and I said it, I think it's on the record, like, I want this place to look like Disneyland. It's not quite looking like Disneyland, so, I know, I believe that's sold property now, that's no longer scal.
I'm not sure how, whether that's for Skennell or not.
We want, we want the public, I don't care what, industrial, residential, this is a highly traveled road, and we want the place to be vibrant and to be appealing, and...
Again, you know, we feel that with the landscaping, the prize of this landscape plan is the trees along the frontage, you know, which, which survive well without irrigation, once they're established, as you well know. If you feel that it's a requirement for, for this project to move forward and make it a condition of approval, you know, we respectfully disagree. We feel that the project, as designed without irrigation, will look nice and will hide the areas that, that are, are less desirable, but yet showcase the nice parts of the building as, as was revised and commented on by the Architectural Design Review Committee.
Would you be willing to extend the release of the landscape bond to three years in lieu of no irrigation?
Yeah, the applicant has indicated they'd be willing to accept a three-year landscape bond in lieu of irrigation.
Jeff, I have a question for you. The proposed potential connection drive for 330 Sullivan Avenue under access management, is that easement adequate for a future entrance there? It doesn't appear that it's like a trailer truck could take the same swing as is shown If that's what the regs require, that's fine, but I just don't see that as being adequate if there's a, say, a tractor-trailer swinging into there.
Right, I understand the concern. So, it appears that easement area is roughly 50 by 30, looking at this, so it's not very big in terms of a tractor-trailer. I don't know if a tractor-trailer can swing through there, not, kind of depends on what gets built on the property next door and what, you know, type of access they need.
What, what do the regulations require the applicant to do for access management? Or is it clear?
It's a, there's a variety of potential possibilities, it's not, you know, and the applicant can end up doing nothing for access management if the commission doesn't deem it as a feasible likelihood. So, it really is something for the applicant to address, and if they don't feel like it's a likelihood, then they really should look to modify and not require it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Yeah, the area we have is just on our property, the southwest corner of our property.
Right.
The intersection would go onto the other property as well. It has to line up with a Schwaier Road across the street, so it would be, the area for the driveway would be bigger than, than what we indicate. We only indicate what's necessary on our side.
Right, but what I'm pointing out is, from Sullivan Avenue into this easement, you also on Page C-OS1 have a turn movement of a tractor-trailer truck, and it doesn't appear that the easement that you've allowed is as long as that tractor-trailer truck. That's my concern.
Okay. I think the easiest resolution is a condition, if you choose, to make a condition, we work with the town engineer and town staff to come up with an adequate area for that. So, if it needs to be widened, expanded, we can do that, if necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, it's a relatively minor point, we can work it out with, with town staff.
Yep. We still haven't resolved the Kennedy Road issue as Commissioner Dexter brought up, and I hate to close the public hearing. Microphone, please.
If I may make a suggestion with regard to Kennedy Road, the, I think the condition at this point may be that the town and the applicant continue to work together to find a suitable resolution to the, you know, suitable means to reconstruct Kennedy Road, because we just don't have all the answers right now, and it's going to take some time to come up with some feasible solutions, either from our side or the developer's side, to deal with Kennedy Road. And there's other unknowns, as were indicated, with regard to this project. The applicant has indicated they have time to resolve this, they're not in a big rush to start building right away. So, I think if we have latitude to take some time to resolve it, it'll get resolved.
Okay.
And, I will mention, there also is a program that the town has for incentives that goes way back for utilities and road extensions that hasn't been used by the town in many years, but it is a program that the town does have. We've made the applicant and town manager aware of that program, because I'm not sure if he was aware of it, because it's an older one. That's something that they can look at with the town council potentially, too. So, we're trying to come up with some avenues that it's not just put on the applicant, but the town participates as well.
Okay. Well, that will be something we'll need to address when we sit down and look at this. Did you have any?
Yeah, it'll take too much time beyond when you need to take action, stuff for us to try to work that out with the town. We've got OESTA approvals, other things that go through WPCN and stuff, so there's, there's going to be a lot of time ahead of us before we could start construction anyways, assuming the project goes forward. So, there's plenty of time to work that out, and we've already had preliminary discussions, and we looked at the document that our director of planning, Michelle Light, provided to us. I've seen that in the past, it's from 2003, if I recall correctly. I think it's still valid, the town can still use it, but there's going to be a lot of negotiations, and the final decision is the town councils, the legislative body for the town.
Okay.
As to what they may or may not do under those regulations, or there may be a completely different program that may apply.
Okay. And, Jeff, I just had one more question for you. With the turning radiuses that are shown on the plans... radiuses that are shown on the plans, do those, um, look adequate to you? Like, is it just the entrance from the road that the trailers aren't supposed to cross paths? Or is it the movements on, um, anywhere on the drawings? Because looking at these movements, and again, I'm referring to C OS one, of the movements shown, it appears there's a lot of potential conflict if one truck is coming north and one is coming, uh, west, or something to that effect.
Right. So if you're talking about the, the northeast side of the warehouse, that first corner, as you go around the back of the loading area, um, there is, there is, looks like the trucks would go over half of the drive, but it's a private drive. So we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, per se. Uh, we can't regulate that and say that they have to be within only half of that drive. It's kind of an operational issue, and they need to manage that. Um, could they make that radius a little wider? They could. But again, at the end of the day, it's, it's an operational issue. It's up to the applicant. And that's true for all applications. Within Kennedy Road, it, it shows that they can turn and have enough space not to interfere with other tra- traffic coming the other way. And the same is true coming out on Sullivan Avenue.
Okay. All right. Um, commissioners, is there any other questions, comments, concerns for this application? If not, Commissioner Wagner?
Just the thing about Kennedy Road, are we putting anything in our motions to deal with Kennedy, uh, the road, or is that just being left out of what we do, and it's somebody else's problem to work out?
I mean, you can certainly put in there that the applicant and the town continue to work to resolve the, uh, find a way to reconstruct Kennedy Road.
We will have something drafted by the next meeting when we address this.
Are we closing the public hearing? I mean, I, I'm happy to close.
Yeah. Um, Mr. DiMali had suggested language as far as addressing Kennedy Road, and, um, I'm good, I think, with that. Um, so commissioners, anything else?
We, we have, we have no reason to continue the hearing, as we see.
Okay.
And I can just put on the record, I did receive a thirty-day extension from the applicant-
Right.
-for, uh, this decision. So we do have, uh, thirty days to, for decision.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, and we will close this public hearing at ten forty-eight PM, and we are adjourned. Save your minutes and save your, um, yeah, your notes and, uh, the bonds, if there's bonds.